This is the third Tuesday in the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Okay, welcome everybody to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, and I call this meeting to order. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You want us to wait? Is it working?
Oh, I think it works.
Just let us know. Okay. We'll have Sandy read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take a roll for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Next up, we have the consent agenda, and it looks like Sandy you have one item.
Under number five, Consent Agenda Letter A, Monthly Reports, the Finance Director's Report for the month of October 2019 was uploaded to the city website.
All right, and the rest of it is items that we take with one motion unless there is a council member or staff that would like to see them, one of those items or any of those items moved to the regular agenda where we would act on those individually. If there is nothing that needs to be moved, we would be looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Hackett, second by Olson, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. A discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next up, we have the regular agenda. I have a couple of changes here before we make a motion on this. Under the Community Department Head Reports, we do have a new request from the Community Arts and Culture Network. They would like to make a presentation to us on a monthly basis, and Bill Clark is actually here tonight to do that. So that, we'll start with that before we start with Kathy's report under that. And then, under number nine, F and G, we are asking that both of those be removed. Those were, well, the resolution was approved by City Planning Commission, and it did not need to move forward to City Council, so that's already taken care of. And the other one is the ordinance. That ordinance has to have a public hearing first, so we're, the public hearing is set up for the next meeting?
November 19th.
November 19th. So you'll see that ordinance at November 19th. So it's not like it's going away. And then, we have a couple items I would like to see, or if we could move up, under nine D and E, if we could just move those up to the beginning of the meeting. They both have to do with Gusmer Enterprises. And if you don't mind, let's do those, let's do those right after public input and before the Community Department Head Reports. Think we can do that, right? Still be considered an action item? Okay. Anything else for the good of the agenda? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve the agenda with those changes. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right, we have two certificates of appreciation for tonight. I don't think either one of them are here tonight, but Justin, I would ask that you give these to both Cody Bank and Eric Johnson for their five years of service to the city. They both work at our wastewater treatment plant, and they've...
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Then, as anticipated, we've known this for a couple of months now, that the Police and Fire Department was going to make their annual report, and I see Jim Schultz this year all ready to give that to us, but Helgi, do you want to, Lieutenant, or Captain Helgason, you want to just set this up for us?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to thank Jim Schultz, Commissioner of the Police and Fire Commission. He's going to present our annual report from 2018 again this year. He's known around our department as the voice of the Wapaka Police Department. I think he's, we talked, he's been on the Police and Fire Commission for 20 years, thereabouts?
It's got to be pretty close to that.
Over in there?
Jim Lewinsky appointed me, and nobody has come to their senses since.
So with that, I'll give it to Jim. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Captain, and my name is Jim Schultz. I live on Foxfire Court in Wapaka. I'm a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Thank you, Mayor Smith, esteemed council members, AJ, good to see you, Ms. Stibbs, and fellow citizens. You have before you a packet which is the 2018 Annual Report for Wapaka PD. It is a comprehensive, 28-page report, but for the sake of tonight's meeting, and in the interest of brevity, I have pared that down to 27 pages. Seriously, I hope you will at some point take the time to look through this, especially check out the graphs and charts. They're very informative, they're easy to understand. Tonight, I'm not going to follow the same format that the report is in. I'm just going to hit some highlights. The biggest takeaway from our report is the positive impact that the PD is having here in Wapaka. You're going to read about programs that are literally changing the way the public views law enforcement and their role in the community. But we're going to start by talking about money, because that's a biggie. Wapaka Police Department serves over 30,000 citizens in what is roughly a 15-mile square around the city of Wapaka. The budget, if I round it up, is about $1.6 mil. It is broken down in your report into seven different categories to show exactly when, where, and how the money was spent. When the bills were paid in 2018, we came in just about one-half of 1% over budget, something in the neighborhood of $10,000 out of $1,006,000. We're working on that this year. We think we can do better. Community policing, as you know, is not what it once was. One of the interesting changes in 2018 is the department got brand-new body cameras that our officers wear. Whenever they're on duty, they record every situation, every circumstance, and every interaction with the public. The software that these cameras use vastly cut down the number of DVDs we have to burn for the DA, because our videos are now stored on the cloud. This really isn't Mayberry anymore. And by the way, the department paid for the new cameras and the software by more efficient maintenance of our squad cars, by taking better care of our vehicles. There were fewer repairs and maintenance costs, and we actually saved enough money to acquire the equipment we needed. Wapaka PD, like most police departments these days, tracks every single call we get. There was not a huge change in the number of calls we received in 2018, but you will see there was a difference in the types of calls we get. Drug manufacturing, drug distribution, still on the rise, and with them, there are the resulting related problems of drug-related crime, overdoses, other crimes related to drug use and abuse. You'll see the graphs in there actually break down what incidents in every category. For the year, there were 750 arrests, that's up slightly from 2017. You'll see property crimes. Somebody's stuff gets wrecked. It can be as small as shoplifting or vandalism, or as major as burglary. Some complaints are handled right at the scene, others could take months of intensive investigation, using modern technology literally every day. I warn you, if you're thinking of doing something bad, there are cameras everywhere, not just on the policeman's chest. 2018 saw, one really cool one, a four-year-old burglary was solved because our cops didn't give up. They just kept after it, heads up, were aware, and when they got a clue, followed it, shook it like a bulldog, and solved a four-year-old burglary. My favorite from 2018 was when they went to a business that had reported a burglary and found that part of the back wall of the building had been removed, so they could get inside and remove coin machines. Somebody actually, rather than break in, took out the wall. When you and I have a bad day at the office, it might be because a piece of equipment doesn't work. When a cop has a bad day, it's because somebody calls and says, "We have a dead body here. Can you come?" And we always have to say yes. We responded to 14 dead bodies in 2018. Two of them turned out to be of suspicious nature. Investigation proved that others were either natural causes or suicide. Sensitive crimes, you will see included in your report. These are crimes of a sexual nature, frequently include sexual abuse of a child or even an adult who is unable to protect himself or herself. 16 sex offenses investigated by our department in 2018. Drug calls. All you have to do is watch or listen to any news show, and you know that the entire country is facing a plague of heroin and meth. To our very good fortune, our department is part of the Central Wisconsin Drug Task Force, which is a multi-department, multi-jurisdictional drug task force, so that when bad guys in the valley are manufacturing drugs and distributing them somewhere in central Wisconsin, we're all on the same page and working together. Interesting that, if you look at the chart, there, for 2018, there were 109 calls, 109 that were drug-related, but Chief Hosele believes that alcohol-related crime should be included, and there were 193 calls involving some type of alcohol use or abuse. The charts are there for the actual numbers and the different categories. Wapaka is part of the Wapaka County SWAT team, Special Weapons and Tactics. It's almost exactly like what you see on TV. As well as their regular duties as a police officer every day, SWAT team members take extra heavy-duty training every single month. They are available, they're on-call 24/7, and in 2018, there were four occasions where the SWAT team was called out. We have two members of the Wapaka PD, or members of the SWAT team. Should point out that not only do they undergo a lot of extra training, most of them, especially our guys, are also certified instructors in one or more police disciplines and are frequently called on to teach at other departments. 2018 saw SWAT called out four times, and every single one of those times, it was a drug house. It was somebody manufacturing meth or taking a chance on blowing up an entire neighborhood, and in every one of those cases, it was believed that weapons were either there or most likely would be there, that the people that they were going after were armed. The thing that I personally would like to see you take away from our report tonight is what the department is doing within the community to make a difference, not just, it goes so far beyond law enforcement, our programs and services, and you'll see several pages with pictures of the activities that we're involved in on our own time and at our own expense, or with the help of donations from the community. We have a Facebook page. Officer Benshaw shares news about the department and occasionally asks the public for help. It's a great, active, social media page. Stuff the Squad, Officer Tom Grant, where we get food for people who just flat-out don't have any. Detective Sergeant Brett Rodenz has the Step Wise Program, that he goes around and speaks on various topics of interest to seniors. The chief and just about everybody in the department is involved with shop with a cop, where we take underprivileged kids, literally take them shopping, give them the money they need so they can buy presents in a home that would not have Christmas without this program. Local donations helped us help over three dozen Wapaka-area kids last year. These are families right here that you'd never know it, driving down the street, but there are homes that do not have Christmas dinner and Christmas trees and the rest of it. We're working on that. We continue to serve food at the local breadbasket. We're really getting up there, too. We're up to, we're averaging 120 meals a night. We'd like to do it twice a year. As well as a breadbasket, we have Adopt a Family, where we literally take a family under our wing and make sure they get all that they need to get by. Visits to Bethany, the Battle of the Badges softball game. We did a lot better this year. There's no firefighters here tonight. Well, we're going to bring in our own Umps next year. The drug takeback, nearly 50 pounds of drugs that could potentially end up in the wrong place in the wrong hands, ended up being properly disposed of because we gave people who sometimes don't know what to do with their old prescription medicines, we gave them a legitimate alternative. There's officers, Wes Zubys, From First on Scene to Next of Kin presentation, which shares personal insights into dealing with suicide. And if you've never seen this presentation, I highly recommend it. Please look, even if you skip all the graphs and the boring statistics, read about these programs, read what your police department is doing and bringing to your community and the difference it's making. Last year, I stood here and I told you that our police department was in a good place. Tonight, I can tell you, I think it's in an even better place. Our officers share a team spirit, a feeling of community. The police department is visible, they're involved everywhere you turn. We have a department that reflects the small-town feel that we believe we still have and we want to keep, but the fact is, we're facing some incredible challenges. Our SWAT team answered four calls last year. I mentioned that. All drug house-related, all locations where weapons were known or believed to be present. There are kids in those homes, there are kids in those same neighborhoods. This is what they're growing up with. This is the reality they live in. They need to see another way. I mentioned we responded to 16 sex crime complaints in 2018. The ages of the victims involved were 20, 16, 14, 12, 8, and 4. Four years old. How does that kid have a chance? Now, we might be winning battles on the streets with guns, but we've got to do better than that. We've got to win in the community, we've got to win in the schools, we have to especially win with our young people. We need to be the trusted, reliable resource that these kids can turn to anytime, any situation. They need to know that we're the good guys and we can make a difference. To do that, we have to be there. To demonstrate that there's another way, we've got to win early, not later. And neighbors, that's the goal of our police department this year. Now, that's all I have. If you have questions, I'm sure that Captain Helgason and I will do our best to answer them. And again, let me urge you to, when you have time, please go through that report and look at the statistics. You're lucky to be as safe as you are in this community. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Jim. Hopefully you don't have any questions of him, because he's going to sit down, but no, no, I'm just kidding. Appreciate the report. Captain Helgason, is there anything that you would like to add?
I think Jim pretty much summarized it. He did an excellent job, and I appreciate him coming here to do this.
Absolutely. Up your pay 100%, Jim. Okay, let's move on then. Thank you very much. Next, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, or a council member, or staff that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, just give your name and address, limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any public input? Lori.
Okay, I do have public input. Last Thursday morning, I think it was around 5:30 when my alarm was going off, I woke up to hear this very friendly voice talking about the week where fines are forgiven at the library. But it went even beyond that. What it was, was discussion about how people belong in the library, and the library belongs to the people. And it was, at that point, I really started thinking about it, how much our library does, and how it moves forward, and belong, you know, belong was huge in that statement. Don't stop coming to the library, come to the library, it's your library, the fine forgiveness and all of that. So I'd like to say a big, huge thank you to PEG for being forward-thinking. As I always tell you guys, I go to libraries all over in the Owls. I mean, you know, it's either Olegami County, Winnebago County, Marion, I'm all over doing visits in libraries. And our library is so thoughtful, the staff is awesome. You have an awesome staff, PEG. You have a board who supports you and has a great understanding of you. You have a foundation, you have a wonderful, wonderful program here. So I want to say thank you to all of you, and it was a wonderful wake-up that morning. I could smile all day, just thinking about how much the Wapaka Library does carry care, I'm sorry, about the people of Wapaka, and how important they are to the library.
Thank you, Lori. Good comments. Any other public input? If not, let's go on to the Gusmer's items that are on the agenda, which is under nine D and nine E. I think Kathy, you are handling the reimbursement by assessment agreement with Gusmer's?
That item is on page 174 of the packet. As part of the agreement, in handling the expansion with Gusmer, they have, they are going to be paying us back for moving the water line and aligning the road, the service road. So we have an agreement for an assessment, which will be paid over 10 years at a fixed rate of 2%. This will be a reimbursement to the water utility. We aren't borrowing for this, so we used a different percentage amount as far as the loan is concerned, so it's not similar to what we do with our other assessments. So Gusmer is in agreement with this, and we're estimating the cost to be about $250,000 when it's done, so about $25,000 a year, plus interest, but it'd be all through the water utilities retained earnings, so there wouldn't be effect on our bond issue, our general fund, fund balance, so.
Okay, any questions on this? This, as you can see on page 174, is just an agreement that the work will be done, the city will pay for it, and then Gusmer's will reimburse us over a 10-year period at an annual, or yeah, interest rate of 2%.
Just a minor point. On, I think it's page 175, the email address for Gusmer Enterprises is incorrect.
Yeah, that'll be correct. That's correct.
Okay, anything else? We're looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Chestnut, second by Pachatsky, that the council approves of the reimbursement assessment agreement with Gusmer Enterprises. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Abstain.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up then, they're still dealing with the Gusmer's, is Stormwater Management Maintenance Agreement, and Justin, you're taking this one?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Thank you. I have a memo that summarizes the need for this memo, excuse me, for the agreement. That's on sheet 177 in your packet. Following that, 178 through 186 is the actual agreement, which, with your approval tonight, will be recorded at the Register of Dees. And then finally, a plan sheet of 187, which shows you basically the plan of the Gusmer expansion, and then what they are doing on the south side of Ware Street, where their existing stormwater facility is, but with this recent expansion of the building, plus all the additional paving in the parking lot, they needed to make some improvements to that stormwater pond. So that just kind of shows you the outline. This agreement is set in place, basically follows DNR standards, or Natural Resources Code 151. It's, just solidifies basically the maintenance of this pond, so that it is working and functioning as the DNR requires. It was designed and will be built to meet those requirements, such as peak flows and cutting down sediment, so it doesn't get out into the wetlands, so that the agreement will require that the Gusmer's Enterprises follows that performance maintenance, so that it keeps performing that way. It allows the city to inspect both the facility and then also their records, and it basically keeps the city not liable for anything that, you know, if they incur some sort of fine from the DNR for not doing it, the city has no liability. Basically, it's just kind of a standard practice these days, because typically with larger developments, these things get built, and then they get ignored, so this document will be put in place on record, so that we ensure that the treatment that's been intended will be there now and into the future. So the agreement, as shown, is within the packet. This would be recorded upon your approval. Okay, so opening up to any questions, if you have any.
Okay, anybody have any questions? We don't have stormwater that goes out there, do we? I mean, the cities?
Well, from their parking lot, from their property, the Gusmer property, I should say, it'll go to this pond that's on the south side of Ware Street. It'll get there through ditches and through a culvert. From there, there's an overflow that will flow to the east, and then eventually down to the wetland area if we have heavy enough rains. This pond is supposed to slow down or mitigate the high peak flows and sediment that goes to those wetlands. So it's a treatment facility, it has an overflow, so if we get a huge, huge rain event, you know, they may have something that releases, but for the most part, this is a very good facility to have there.
So it never reaches our actual stormwater pipes or anything like that?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Motion?
To approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Martin, that we approve of the Stormwater Management Practice Maintenance Agreement with... practice maintenance agreement with Gusmer Enterprises and the City of Wapaka, and it will also be recorded, as a recorded document. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Abstain.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Tom, thank you for coming tonight. Good luck. I hope you get the star. Next, we have the community and department head reports. You can notice that we changed that, instead of just saying department head reports, now we also have community and department head reports. We have one new community, that group that wanted to be a part of this, and we suggested that they do it on our second meeting of the month, the same time that we do the department head meetings. So I guess Bill Clark is our first guinea pig of the night. He's going to be representing the Community Arts and Culture Network, but before he does that, he has something else he would like to talk about, so.
Good evening. Before we get into the event that we have proposed for the city, I just want to let everybody know that on November 6th, we are having a chili cook-off at Danes Hall, and it is the Battle of the Departments. It'll be the Wapaka Police and Wapaka Fire versus the Wapaka County Sheriff's and Corrections Officers. So we're hoping to have at least 25 different chilis. It is a free event. We suggest a $5 donation. All of the money is raised, will, the winner, the winning team will decide where that goes to either charity of their choice, or a piece of equipment that they need. We also have bought today, we just purchased a traveling trophy, because we want this to be an every-year thing, so it will bounce to whoever wins it. And then we have a special prize for the best chili. So I told all the county, the county sheriff, Sheriff Wills, that he should talk to the county employees as well, and have them come. And I told Chief Hosele, he should talk to the city employees, and ask them if they would like to join in and make chili. We're hoping to have at least 25 different chilis for people to sample. Culvers of Wapaka has donated portion cups, spoons, and napkins. And then we, someone may be donating a prize for the best chili, so we're just going to wait and see. I don't want to announce that until we know for sure. So just wanted to let you all know that. So now we'll get another presentation that I'm really here for. So, good evening, Mayor Smith, Council President Mayhew, distinguished council members. My name is Bill Clark, and I am here today on behalf of a collaborative of Main Street businesses, clubs, and organizations that are part of the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network, a result of the Wapaka Cultural Plan that was initiated in 2018. This year, a group of Main Street businesses, groups, and organizations decided to come together to start an event for this Christmas season. We at Danes Hall, we're going to produce a children's event, and some of the businesses and organizations were wanting to do a Christmas event, so we got together and started planning it, and this is what we came up with. Slideshow.
So we came up with the Yuletide Trail.
So it'll start at 10 o'clock at the Holly Center, and we'll have storytime with the librarian. They are buying some tins that have a picture of old Wapaka on them. Every year, it'll be different. And then, as the day goes on, you stop at the area stores, and they will have cookies for you to fill up your tin. And then they will also be making some holiday crafts with kids. So at 10 o'clock, that's kind of like a little kid area, and you can buy your tins. And then from 10:30 to 4, make your way down Historic Main Street. You can collect the cookies. You can shop at the gift shops and specialty stores. There's a sing-along, sing-along with different groups of carolers. You can donate canned goods for the Wapaka Food Pantry. We have three drop-off spots planned for that. And you can, you can take a jewelry class at Art of Glass. Then you can stop and have lunch at one of the many restaurants that are downtown. You can also continue to fill up your cookies, and stop at, stop and have some wine, or one of, handcrafted beer, one of the local places. And then from 12 to 4 at Danes Hall, we're going to be doing a Christmas tree lighting, Danish crafting, holiday card-making for veterans and for residents of area nursing homes. We have a Santa Claus visit, hot cocoa station, storytelling, and then we'll end it with a sing-along. This is just for families and kids. It is totally free. And then after, we hope people will stay and eat at some of the restaurants around, in town. Go to one of the two brewing companies and sip a handcrafted beer. They can snack on the cookies that they collected throughout the day. And then join the Wapaka Historical Society as they light their tree at dusk outside the Holly Center. So who's producing this event? This is a collaborative between different businesses on Main Street, the Wapaka Area Chamber of Commerce, the Wapaka Tourism Board, the Wapaka King and In-Between Group, Wapaka Historical Society, Wapaka Community Arts Board, and Bonnie's Bloomers. I also need to add on there, Bill Tate and Chainah Lakes Elementary School. Why are we doing this? This event is being produced because we love our community. The event is geared to families who want a wholesome activity this holiday season. This event is not just a commerce event. There will be many free activities. This event will bring in people from outside of Wapaka. With your help, this event can grow, bringing in new visitors to Wapaka, and help our historic Main Street grow back to what it once was. The great shopping, the warm, friendly customer service, and the great food will only improve, will only prove Wapaka as a year-round destination. And that's, that's all for that. December 14th. So in the past, the city has put lights on the trees. Last year, they were just wrapped around the trunks. Terry from the Chamber and Rick from Touch of Glass met with Justin and figured out a way to keep the guys who put the lights up happy, so they will be back up in the trees this year. And Bonnie's Bloomers has agreed to decorate the bandstand.
Oh, cool.
Bill Tate is donating a Christmas tree. And as of today, Chainah Lakes Elementary School students will be making the ornaments for the tree, and having a field trip to come down and decorate the tree. So what have we, what do we have done so far? Michelle from Northern Home has made a very cool poster for the event. A Facebook event has been created. As of this morning, there were over 500 people that had clicked interested in this event, and it's only going to grow as we get closer. We found a Santa, finally. Mr. Dale Felth has generously agreed to be our Santa.
Hold on, there's only one Santa now. Come on.
Never done, yeah, really.
Two foreign exchange students will be elves, manning the hot cocoa station. I have an email into Wapaka Secret Service. If you don't know what that is, it's a service group from the schools, kids that just want to give back to the community and get nothing in return for it. We're hoping that they are the elf guards for Santa, standing on each side with their little glasses and their elf hat. The Girl Scouts will be at Danes Hall to help with the Danish crafting and Christmas card-making for the veterans at the Wisconsin State Veterans Home, and the residents at Bethany Home. As I said, the Historical Society has a photo for their collector's tins, and are currently looking for a manufacturer to keep the cost down. Right now, they found one for around 20. They want to try to drop it as low as they can. Michelle Drake with Wapaka King and In-Between has reached out to her group, asking if anyone would like to help with the event. Marcy Boku with Wapaka Arts Board is putting together a songbook for the sing-along as a, as a giveaway kind of thing to take for this event. The Wapaka Area Chamber of Commerce has a town crier costume, and we're currently looking for people to volunteer to walk up and down Main Street and ring the bell, and remind people of the food drop-off locations for the food pantry, and to remind people of the cookies and the tins. The Wapaka Community Theater has been contacted about having small groups of carolers walk up both North and South Main Street. Bill Tate of Bill Tate Keller Williams has offered one of his beautiful pine trees for the bandstand. Chainah Lakes Elementary, Explorer Charter School students will be making handcrafted ornaments and having a field trip to come down and decorate the tree. Work to be completed. We are in need of art supplies for the Christmas cards. So if anyone would like to make a donation for that, they can contact me directly at Danes Hall. If at all possible, a mention of this event could be placed in the water bill announcement. We would be greatly appreciative of that. In closing, I would like to thank the city, especially Justin and the guys who are going to be putting up the lights this year. It really does make a difference and set the mood of what Wapaka is, a close-knit community where one citizen looks out for another and exudes pride for living here. Not all communities are lucky to have the feeling of a smaller town has to offer. We would also like to thank everyone who has volunteered to make this event a success, and hopefully we can grow this bigger each year and make Wapaka not just known for its beautiful lakes in the summer, but also the uniqueness, the hospitality, and the many services offered on our historic Main Street. I thank you for your time. If anybody has any questions, I can answer your questions.
May I have any questions? Bill, thank you. Good luck to you. Sounds like a fun event.
Thank you. I'm going to leave a few of the posters for the chili cook-off next to Attorney Hart, if anybody wants to take one for their office.
Okay, let's move on then. Kathy, Finance Director, Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Good evening, council members. My report was added on Friday to the website, so it's not in the packet, it's an addendum. I've been working on the 2020 budget. We've continued to receive information to put the budget together. We are still waiting for the state to complete the manufacturing assessments before we can determine our tax rate. So we are one of two communities in the county that are incomplete yet with our statement of assessment, so us and Clintonville are waiting for the state to finish up on manufacturing before we can have a statement of assessments and determine what our rate is going to be. Working on insurance renewals, and I'll go over most of this stuff in the committee of the whole, but that's pretty much what my office has been working on, is budget.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. Any questions, comments? All right, let's move on over to the library. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I'm really excited to roll out our strategic plan. We're going to be approving that tomorrow evening at the library board meeting, and it really is a bold new direction for the library. We're looking at increasing access, increasing awareness of services, connectedness in the community, and inclusivity, so everyone feels welcome in the library. And so this is, as I said, a bold new direction for the library, and we're really excited about it. And we will be planning a presentation for the council within the next month. We have a new full-time employee, Laura Jandasek is our new adult programming librarian, and she comes to us with years of experience in libraries, and she was a person who lived in this community, and moved away, and then moved back. So I can really appreciate that she wanted to come back home. We are working with Theta Care to provide a community read, and I have copies of that with me tonight. It's called Deepening Community. And it really does talk about how can we prepare our community to care about our neighbors, to look out for each other. And we have discussions planned throughout the community about this book. So I have a couple of copies that are not barcoded, so even if you don't have a library card, you're welcome to take them this evening. And I do have one that I can check out to somebody with a library card. So that's our community read. We do, we are accommodating the schools. They have a bus that stops every day after, after school at the library. And on Wednesdays, they have an early dismissal, and we're seeing a lot of kids in the library coming to do some after-school fun and play and learn. So that's really exciting for us, to see all of the youngsters that are coming in to enjoy our library. We have, we are rolling out a new meeting room policy, and this is actually a preview to the plan, because we want to make sure that we have greater access to the meeting rooms that we provide. So the new policy will allow people to start a meeting when the library is open, and then complete their movie, their meeting after the library has closed, so with a memorandum of understanding with the person in charge of the meeting. So that's another new thing for us. And we are hosting Business After 5. It's actually the City of Wapaka, who's a chamber member, and that's going to be in our exhibit room, other areas of the library next Tuesday after 5. So I hope you'll join us for that. Oh, and of course, as Lori said, find forgiveness week this week and next week, and just stop in, have those fines, overdue fees forgiven, and you can get back to using the library again. Thanks.
Thanks, Peg. Any questions, comments for Peg? Public Works.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. My update can be seen on page 11 of the packet. Starting wastewater, as usual, our new WPDS permit was not renewed on October 10th. Basically, DNR indicated they are waiting for a response and concurrence from EPA. In the meantime, we'll current, we'll just be working underneath our existing or older permit until we get concurrence from EPA. We met, we, as in myself and the staff, the wastewater treatment plant, met with the student group from UW-Moarki. This group is partnering with Department of Energy. They came in and said that they wanted to propose a goal of 15% for energy savings annually, which would equal about $9,000 in cost savings. We walked through it, did a lot of things. They brought up a number of things we never considered, as well as a number of wastewater engineers that have come through our plant before. So we're really excited to see their final report, which we're expecting in a few months. Streetside crack filling, you probably saw the crews out there. They were on State Street for a long time. That's finished, so you no longer have to look out for them out there. Granite Street, our surveying work is about complete, as we work forward to, or towards a design for Granite Street. We televised a sanitary sewer, identified several issues underneath, and we're working on a plan for improving those facilities as well. In this winter, still planning a public informational meeting for all the individuals, well, within the city, but inviting those on the corridor to give them an update. So I'll keep, keep updating council until then. Salt Shed, we are advertising right now for bids. Those are due on October 25th. It looks like we'll not be able to complete that construction this year. Materials delivery is not available until, I've been told, December 1st. So we just kind of push back the schedule of it to make it more, which hopefully we get better costs from, or bids from these contractors. In the meantime, we'll still get our salt from the county. We'll just have to travel a little bit further, out to A-Pass 10 to get it for this year. So we'll still be able to make it work, but we'll be looking to get the salt shed done. At this point, we're not in a hurry, and we're just going to try and make the budget work for us. Leaf pickup has started, even though the leaves are not really coming down right now. Some are, some aren't, most aren't. Please check the schedule. I have that attached in the packet. We will be going around, we'll stick to the schedule, but of course, we always double back around again. So if you miss us the first time, or if the leaves don't quite fall in your yard the first time, get them out there, we'll come back around and get them. The Highway 10 work is complete. The ramp was open. I have that information, that link, here in the packet again, because they'll be doing that work again next year. You can get updates there as well, and I'll try to continue to, to keep you all updated as well at the council meeting here. Waterside, we have a student group from UW-Plattville working on modeling our system, which means they basically take our GIS information, all of our water mains underground, put it in a computer program, and it helps show us where our water is going. A lot of information can be shown on it, pressures, flows, chlorine. So this is something that we're getting done for free. It's a great savings for us, but we'll get a finalized product that we'll be able to use into the future, so we're really excited about that. The water main on Shamo Road is complete. That's tied in, that's working. The road is, the gravel road is pretty much done as well, and the, in the expansion for Gusmer's is well under its way, so we're excited that that's completed with almost no disturbance to the users in that area. Hydrant flushing is complete as well. I haven't gotten any complaints. I don't know if, if any of the council members have as far as discolored water, so... far as discolored water, so it seems like that was a success as well. We were visited by Department of Safety and Professional Services a couple weeks ago as a random review of our facilities, basically just for safety items. Basically, we had no major issues, and I should be getting a report on that within the next few weeks. Questions?
Any questions, comments for Justin? All right, thanks Justin. Andrew, Parks Director?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, we had a successful Fallarama again last month. That is a fundraiser again for the Friends of Wapaka Parks. A lot of people stopped down, I know I helped out, excuse me, with the fire department, we handed out about 300 fishing poles to kids as we taught them how to use fire extinguishers. So there's a lot of people down there, and Friends of Wapaka Parks raised about $3,000, which they used to help us with projects such as the swimming rafts that they helped us with last year to work up. So parks are closed in the sense that the bathrooms are closed and locked, and the water is turned off, except for Swan Park because of flag football. So users can still come in and use our parks, of course, but the shelters and all of that is getting closed as it gets colder and colder each night. We will be working with the DNR to look into possibly doing some deep-water tree drops in Mirror and Shadow Lake for fish habitat. We'll continue to work with them and communicate with them, and follow all regulations and permits if we do choose to go that route. If you remember, we had some sort of storm this summer, and we have some trees that we could use for those to help with the fish habitat in those lakes. And I will, as we continue to get more information, I'll get more information out on that. Recreation side with youth volleyball finishing up, flag football finishing up in two weekends with the infamous Swan Bowl Championship, and chess will also be actually just finished up. Next up is our basketball stuff, so we have a beginner basketball program, an intermediate basketball program, and this year we're adding with the basketball club some Saturdays where the high school teams are going to come in and work with the kids on the weekends, and we'll work with them on the skills during the week to get the kids excited and to have the kids see what the potential is in the future to play high school basketball. In the senior center, they do script cards from QuickTrip at this time to do as a fundraiser, so you can come to the senior center, buy a $25 gift card for $25 to QuickTrip. The good thing is the senior center gets some money back from that. So they're going to coordinate with Culver's and Three Square Restaurant at this point, and then they're looking to add a couple more possibly, you know, like a Pigly Wiggly or Fleet Farm or something like that. So it doesn't really, you know, the money is just straight away for the person buying it, but the seniors do get some money back from that. They are creating a new ladies' pool league. We have a very successful men's league that has 40-plus people that play in it each winter, and this year they're going to start a ladies' pool league, and they already have 13 people signed up. So if someone out there is part of the senior center and interested in pool, please definitely sign up. The pals grant that I talked about in the past, physical activity for lifelong success has started. They did fill that class to max capacity at 12. They've started the first two, and there's like a pre-test. They have a lot of things throughout the program, and then a post-test to see how the people are doing. So goal of that was to get people in the community who are not physically active right now physically active. And then they will have a member Thanksgiving meal on November 21st, so they're going to put together a member Thanksgiving meal to get those, as the library has talked about, who maybe don't have somewhere else to go and don't feel included to have an opportunity to participate in that, be kind of like a potluck banquet. So that is it, unless there's questions.
Anybody? All right, thanks Andrew. Captain Helges then.
Thank you, Mayor. On October 8th, the Commission and Chief Hozell and I met with, for our monthly meeting. During the meeting, the Commission reviewed the expense report and Chief's monthly report for September. We also talked about the liaison officer position, the second position that the school district and Chief Hozell have been in talks about. That position would be for the middle school and the learning center, and we believe there's going to be some internal candidates if it goes through that would be interested in that, and we'd start a hiring process. That process is approximately two months long to get somebody hired for that position. Officer Zubie was here tonight, volunteered to stay in the school and train the next person, so we appreciate that. Chief Hozell also talked to the Commission that he's been working with Administrator Jensen on ATV/UTV ordinance. Some of the discussion that ordinance would include, or some of the regulations they talked about is a half hour before sunrise and a half hour after sunset, and also possibly not allowing ATVs and UTVs in the downtown district. The Commission was also given information on upcoming Police and Fire Commission workshop in Stevens Point. Commissioner Fair is going to attend that November 1st. We also are going to be having a drug takeback on Saturday, October 26th, lobby of the police department. That's going to be from 10:00 AM till 1:00 PM. It's been a pretty successful program. Last fall, we had 49.6 pounds of prescription medicine that was taken in, and this spring we had 59 and a half pounds of prescription medicine. So it's been pretty successful. We also talked about the speed board that was placed on Churchill Street from September 18th through September 24th. There was, during that week, there were 16,898 vehicles that traveled past that location with an average speed of 27.3 miles per hour. Trick-or-treat hours are going to be from 5:00 to 7:00 on October 31st, and St. Mark's Church will be handing out glow sticks again in the parking lot of Holly's Funeral Home. And Officer, I think Detective Odenz is going to be there assisting with that. And Bill Clark already talked about the Chili Cook-Off, so that will be participating in. Then we also had our second breadbasket meal of the year on September 24th. We had 125 meals served.
All right, thanks, Captain. Anybody have any questions or comments? Appreciate it. Josh, IT?
Completed a lengthy process to select new copiers or multi-function printers for the city that you'll learn more about tonight. The Wapak Online Public Service Commission Grant Project period has completed at the end of September, and although we're going to continue work in this expansion area that we've expanded into Northern Wapaka County, the portion of the project we'll get reimbursement dollars for is concluded. We added 50 customers as part of this project, 12 access points, and the total cost of the project was a little over $32,000, with the PSC reimbursing us for 45%, or about $14,800. On the wind TV side of things, I actually just ordered the equipment today to get us to the point where we can do all of our programming in high definition. Up to this point, everything's standard def, so everything we put on Facebook or online doesn't have as clear quality as everything else, and it's just been a slow process year after year upgrading a piece or two of equipment to get to the point where we could do this. Our cable TV station will still be below standard def levels, because it's all-spectrum affords to us for the quality of that, but everything we put online will look a lot better, and hopefully the next council meeting or two will have all the equipment in place, and I'll be doing a lot better quality on that. And then I've been kind of evaluating and looking at some different wireless access points to update what we have in our main city buildings. What we have is about five, six years old, and there's better standards and some faster equipment out there, and I'm hoping to implement something new before the end of the year.
All right, thanks Josh. Questions, comments for Josh? Sandy?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report starts on page 51. I received and recently completed an exhaustive open records request from Attorney Gary Dyer. He's representing Home and Away Ministries, Ruby's Pantry, for the old Churney Building at West Fulton Street. His request went back to January 1st of 2010, and he wanted everything to do with, anything to do with Churney, Home and Away, Ruby's Pantry, or 705 West Fulton Street. So this search involved four city departments. It took a lot of time. Aaron was also involved in it, and he has spoke with Mr., or had emailed Mr. Attorney Dyer and told him that we would send, release the information once the invoice is paid for our time. We can't charge for the electronic transmission of the work, but our time is certainly going to be reimbursed, hopefully. Also, on another note, I plan on appointing Barb Robert as my deputy clerk. It would be official as of January 1st, 2020, if everything goes well. And I've been working on a job description for her, and Aaron will provide more information on that tonight at the committee of the whole. And the one temporary Class B picnic license that I issued was the Badgers Den Brewing Club. They're having their annual tasting event at The Depot on Oak Street on October 26th. And that's it.
All right. Thanks Sandy. Any questions, comments for Sandy? Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. First, I'll touch on a couple items in my report. Big box retail closings, just wanted to touch base on this and what our conversations are within staff. I know it's a hot topic in our community right now. We are currently reaching out and doing what we can to reach out to some possible stores that come up frequently in questions, hey, have you talked to them? Have you talked to them? And we are doing that. We're finding it's difficult to get much back and forth with those individuals and those corporations, but we will continue to try to get in touch with the people that can make something happen or at least give us some answers. In the meantime, we've talked a lot about the Fulton Street corridor and the rezoning and what that looks like. You know, if something doesn't move in in the near future, how do we be proactive in looking at that area? And that's going to be a part of that, first part of that zoning rewrite, and looking at that to make ourselves more flexible with some of those conversations. Strategic plan I've touched on, I believe last month, was able to touch base with Mr. Jankowski, who is who you guys worked with to start that process sometime this summer, I believe. Looked at the draft that was provided to the city based off of those conversations that you guys had, and I thought there's a lot of really good information in there. So we're just looking to pick up where that left off. Got some good feedback from all of our department heads on maybe what we could include in that to kind of bring it to the finish line and give us that kind of framework moving forward. So you guys will be hearing something about that very soon. October 9th, we were able to meet with the township chairs of Lind, Farmington, and Dayton. Talked about a number of things, really trying to meet monthly or bimonthly as we move forward just to have a conversation on all of the things that are going on within our community. We have a lot of things that kind of overlap, and we just want to make sure that we're on the same page with some of those, and sometimes we won't be on the same page, and that's okay too. One of the things that came up was youth program agreement. Kathy and Andrew have done an awesome job working to create a youth program fund that was communicated with those township chairs, and you'll be seeing something soon on that as well. Mayor Smith actually just saw it for the first time this afternoon. I think that'll provide a good foundation as we move forward with that, and then we will also, Andrew and I have on our list to also look at that equity piece. Okay, now we have our, kind of that tool that shows transparency, and it creates a foundation with our partners. Now we have to get to that, making sure everyone can participate. Feel like I'm a bark-and-record person.
Yeah.
Talking about this. Grant and collaboration opportunity, here's another one, kind of with the townships. Justin and I have been talking back and forth, it actually came forward from Jim Miller, an idea to basically apply for a grant that is a one-time funding source, $75 million through the DOT. And we are going to be having a meeting with Casey Byersdorf at the county who will be spearheading this. The idea is to put together a grant application that would have a trail system that would kind of be a community-wide trail system that would lead them into the downtown area, connect the Chain of Lakes. Obviously, we have the walking trail, could tie into that. It's a 90-10, so that's something that we would bring forward as well, and Kathy will have some input. You know, if all goes perfect and we were fortunate enough to get awarded something like that, obviously Kathy would provide information on how we could cover our part of that. That is a December 6 deadline, so that's going to be coming up very soon. Liquor licenses, just wanted to touch base on that. We are looking into the Danes Home, the 300-person capacity. I guess that thing that would allow us to basically issue one to the Danes Home. Jerry Doeman, our fire chief, as well as Jane, our building inspector, are looking into it both separately, kind of using it to say, hey, what did we both come up with? And they will be getting back to me by Friday of this week. Planning and Development Department, so I will not be in the office that you guys are used to finding me at, so if you stop by City Hall in the next month or two, I will be over, at a minimum, I'll be over at Brennan Kane's old office in planning and zoning. Think just kind of immersing myself within their conversations, the people that come by is going to help me learn a little faster, and obviously with some things that have moved around lately, it'll give me a quicker idea of how staffing should look moving forward. So they've been great in putting up with me for a whole two days in that office so far. The only other thing I want to say is I kind of had a screw-up when I did tell you guys about the Business After Five. Peg mentioned it already. The wine is not cash, it's actually free, so that's a plus. Uh-oh. Yes, ma'am?
Business After Five is by invitation only, it's not...
Yes, that is correct. Four chamber members. Thank you. Yes, free wine is not given to everybody. And that's all I have.
But everybody here is invited.
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, if anyone has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Any questions, comments for Aaron? All right, let's move on to new business then, and we're going to start with Josh. Josh has been working very hard on this multi-function printer that we're going to enter into an agreement with, so Josh, give us the detail.
Okay, I'll kind of run through the memo quickly and just hit some highlights on it. Right now, we've got eight multi-function printers, which are the, you know, the big copiers you see in many businesses that do faxing, copying, scanning, and printing. They're meant, whether it's just a small little print job or large print jobs with, you know, hundreds or thousands of sheets they handle, all that, and the city uses those quite extensively. Our current setup is we're working with a couple different vendors, have a mix of different manufacturers for machines, we're paying, you know, multiple different bills each month. We're just, we've just got a huge mix of what's going on right now. Some machines that we've selected, I've been involved with prior processes to provide some feedback, others, departments have just gone out and purchased what they felt was best for them. One of my goals seeing all this has been trying to find the right time to kind of centralize and standardize all this to be more efficient, to spend our money smarter on it, and lead to some efficiencies, and with some current lease end dates, and based off the ages of some machines we own, we've finally hit that perfect timing to do this. And a couple advantages for kind of consolidating all this, all city staff would be working with the same brand, same manufacturer machines, you can walk up to any of them and you're going to know what you're doing. All staff would call the same vendor to order supplies, to ask questions, to put in a request for support, which makes things easier. It's going to bring some cost savings, and I'll talk about that in a couple minutes. It's going to provide consistent print and scan quality regardless which machine you use. We've got some issues with that right now. And the other nice thing is having all the machines on a single lease and a single maintenance agreement is going to allow for predictable budgeting and consistent... is going to allow for predictable budgeting and consistent replacement in the future. Starting in June, I released a request for proposals, and this went out to the vendors we currently work with. It was placed on our website, and I also reached out to vendors that were either recommended to me or have cold-called me over the past couple years to try to get a wide selection to look at. We received a total of seven proposals with eight different options. We formed a staff work group consisting of Sandy, we had Rhonda Rollins from Planning and Development, Jerry Allen from the Police Department, and Tammy Jackwit from Parks and Recreation involved, kind of representing most of the areas that would be getting these new machines. And they provided a lot of assistance in helping to make sure what we were looking at was good for the organization, good for their departments. We met with all the vendors, narrowed down to four that we felt were the best fit, had additional meetings with them, demoed machines. A couple of the vendors brought machines on site for us to try out for a couple days, just to really get a good feel. Because we're going to be committing organization-wide to five machines. We really want to make sure what we get in here is going to work well for us. Upon going through that process, our group got back together and very unanimously decided we liked the multi-function printers from Sharp. Those worked really well. They met our requirements. They surpassed some of the most common complaints we get about the current machines, whether it's print quality or response time on them. So we were very impressed with that. We had two vendors that proposed those machines who were just very close in the process as far as pricing went, as far as what they proposed, as far as their references said. Had some final meetings with both vendors, just kind of work on some of the fine point details, review pricing, review what they proposed, and kind of used that, used the reference checks, and used what our work group felt to kind of come to a conclusion with that. So at this point, City Hall, Community and Economic Development, Park and Rec, Police Admin, and the Police Department on the general fund side are the five machines we'd be replacing. The library has two machines that will fit into this process. They are going to go on to a shorter lease because they are not up for renewal until next July. So we're going to get everything across the board, a single end date, and we're just going to have a shorter lease on those ones. And then we're proposing to add a machine in the Senior Center who would immensely benefit from having one instead of two small desktop laser printers that aren't meeting their needs. As far as the budget impact goes, between the, on the general fund side for those six machines, we're either budgeted or paying $10,400 a year for our current setup. And on the library side for the two machines we're going to include in this process, they're paying a little over $6,800 a year. The final pricing, like kind of throughout the, in your packet, you'll see a breakout of all the pricing by vendor, by machine. All those details are in here in the cover memo I've just kind of summarized. And the final proposal pricing that we got, two RIME proposed over. I'll back up and say the pricing's based on our current printing averages. So the, there's two costs. There's the lease, and that's a set rate. And then there's the maintenance pricing. So we pay per page, and that covers the toner. That covers any supplies on the machine. That covers any parts that need to get fixed. That covers the service technician. So we just pay that per cost for what we print. And it's pretty much all-inclusive. We put the paper in, and that's really all we need to do. So based on our printing averages on our current machines is kind of how I came up with this number. So the lease is set. Regardless how much we print, the maintenance pricing would be variable depending upon, you know, if our print volumes go down over the next five years, we'll save more money. If we end up doing more printing, it will go up. But based on those averages, RIME over five years came out to 65.7. OTG, which is the vendor we're proposing to go with, came out to 66.7. And we're currently, across the organization for our current setup, are budgeted for paying just shy of $80,000. So by consolidating everything to one vendor, one manufacturer, we're seeing some huge cost savings because the vendors can go to the manufacturer and say, hey, we've got someone that'll do eight machines. Instead of one, they'll offer, it's kind of like shopping for a car, same concept. They'll offer lower pricing. The leasing companies offer better rates the more you're doing. And by consolidating everything, our cost per page goes down significantly because our print volume goes up. The reason we are going, I guess, with the second lowest one, kind of twofold. Our group felt best about OTG. Both vendors were very close, but we felt they just had a little step up based on the reference checks, based on our conversations with them. We feel they'll do a little bit of a better job on the service side of things, that they'll be a little more responsive. We had a better feel about them. The other thing OTG offered to do was to replace the four machines that were currently leasing at no cost to us. RIME would not guarantee that based on where they needed to get shipped back to. And, you know, to ship those big machines back, that's costly, and I'd say that's at least a $500 value. So we're closing the, closing that small gap of about $1,100 over that five-year period between the two vendors. And then again, assuming our print habits don't significantly change over five years, about a $12,500 savings. But one kind of caveat on this, and Aaron kind of touched on it during his report, there's some discussion about staffing and maybe where people are working upstairs. And I guess my final recommendation, we've got one machine we're kind of questioning if we're going to need it or if we may be downgrade it to a more basic model, and that would be the machine for Community and Economic Development. There might be some rearranging if our staff is upstairs, and that might change that one facet of this. And I think we'll know probably by the end of the year, have a feel what we're going to do there. And so what I'm asking, what my recommendation is, I'm seeking approval on. We're going to keep that machine in here as is. We're just going to take it off that initial lease agreement. And when we figure out what happens, we'll go back and add that one on. And there'd be one of three options, either leaving it as is, downgrading it to maybe a more basic model as a backup machine, or maybe removing it. So the recommendation would be to enter a five-year agreement with the Office Technology Group. Actually, two different agreements in there in your packets. One would be the lease agreement, and over five years for those eight machines, the cost for the lease would not exceed $40,072.44. And the maintenance pricing for the maintenance side would not exceed 3/8ths of a tenth of a cent for monochrome and .037 of a cent per color per impression. So that's what I'm asking for approval on. Any questions? I know that was a lot I tossed out there.
Nice job.
So we're looking at that total that you have on page 137 then, between the lease and the maintenance of $66,794.54 at the current print, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we enter the lease and maintenance agreement with Office Technology Group for the project that Josh has outlined.
I'll second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that the council approves of entering into a five-year agreement with the Office Technology Group, OTG, for multifunctional printers for the Police Department, City Hall, Community Economic Development Office, Parks and Recs, Senior Center, and Library for an amount not, for an amount of $66,794.54. Any comments, questions? Suffice it to say that the salesman earned his commission dealing with Josh, by the way.
There is a lot of back and forth.
For sure.
Well, good job.
I just want to show appreciation for Josh for including the library in this. They've saved our fund money that we'll be able to use to more fully serve our community. So it's great working with Josh and having that group that work together to make the decisions that will really benefit the whole city.
All right. Thanks. I think Josh did a great job doing this. Can't argue with that. I felt like I went through the process after reading. Well done. Although you probably don't know how to use the printer, but yeah.
The new ones, the new ones actually were really simple. When we demoed it, had it here, I found staff walking up, figuring out things on their own. And that was one of the things with the Sharp ones that stood out. So Dave might be able to figure it out.
All right, any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Meele.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, thanks, Josh. Appreciate it. Next up, we have an amendment to our CAP Service. Kathy, that's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. My item is on page 169 of the packet. We have an agreement currently with CAP Services for the administrative, administration of our Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund. And this is a loan fund that the city received a long time ago and has loaned out to homeowners for home improvement. And the loan gets, fund gets paid back when they sell the property. And the agreement is to give them $600 for doing the initial inspection of the applicant and the $600 for the final inspection of the applicant. And then they get 15% of the funds that are repaid to do their program administration. So they don't make any money other than $1,200 on the front end of the loan, but they don't get any money until the loan is repaid back into the fund. This loan fund currently, I did include a balance sheet of it, has right now $25,000 in cash in it. It has an outstanding receivable balance of $463,000 that we're waiting for. As they sell, they'll come back in, and we issue new loans. But the administration is all done by CAP. They do all the vetting of who's eligible for these funds and that. So it's just up on that 15%. I believe it used to be only 7%, so they're looking for a little bit more. But the repayment is maybe one or two loans a year. So, and some of those loans that we do have to write off of the fund is from foreclosure. So, which they don't get any of that. So I'm looking for, to them to continue their administration of this loan fund.
Okay, so it's an agreement just with an increase in, in their fees for handling the administration of the loans. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody would like to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that the council approved the amendment to the agreement with CAP Services for the administration of the Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
And Paul Meele.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Kathy. I think you're still up, though. We're on to the taxi cab here.
Correct. That item is on page 173 of the packet. I'm looking for approval to purchase two, a pack of taxi vehicles under the State of Wisconsin Human Services vehicle contract. One is going to be a minibus, and that is under our grant from the 2018 Capital Outlay Grant, which we received an additional $12,000 from the state to purchase the minibus for Veterans Home. And our, our cost is $12,000 of that van. From what I understood, after I wrote this memo, I got a call from the state, and they are going to absorb the alternate driver's seat and radio. So we'll get full coverage of the alternate seat and radio. They didn't have a problem with that. The second vehicle is a rear-loading accessible minivan, and that's to replace one of our 2010 poor-conditioned vehicles. I did include a list of the vehicles that we have in inventory. It hasn't been determined whether or not it's going to replace one of the minivans or the Crown Vics, depending on which one's in worse shape. But again, this one is using the 2019 Capital Outlay Grant, and our cost is $7,590. And these are all bought through the state contracts. I don't get to bid these. I just go on the state website and purchase them off that. They've already been vetted with a purchasing agreement. So, and both of these items have been budgeted in the Capital Improvement Fund. From last year, there is money left over for that. And $7,590 and the $12,000 is budgeted in 19's capital outlay. So we're kind of buying two at once. But we should be caught up because we're behind on our capital grants, so.
Okay, so basically, we're buying two vehicles for just under $100,000, and our cost is going to be about $20,000 after the DOT grant.
Correct.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Hagan, that the council approves the purchase of those two vehicles. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Paul Meele.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Kathy. I actually think she talked more tonight than Justin did. Okay, next up, we have the ordinance that we talked about, and I'll let Aaron go through the fine point of this. But I do want you to understand that all of these ordinances that we're talking about tonight are the first reading, so we're not going to vote on them. We're just going to have discussion on them. And they will be for public consumption to look at and form their own opinions. And we'll vote on those at our next meeting, the first meeting in November. So let's talk about the ATV and UTV use in the city of Opaque. Aaron?
All right, thank you, Mayor Smith. So I have a memo on page 192 of your packets. This memo outlines kind of our background, where we've been in the conversation, and where we're headed. So during the August 6 meeting, just to recap, Mr. Gene Goody came in, was in attendance, spoke to the city council on, kind of to advocate for ATV, UTV use in the city. Brought us to the point we were at in between this time, in which both myself, Justin, Andrew, and Chief Hosele have all put some time and research into, you know, what this could look like and what it would mean. A lot of that is laid out in the summary within your, the memo in your packet. I just want to touch on, on a few things. The people that I've spoken to, city administrator-wise, one from Rhinelander and one from New London. It's both laid out there for you, but, and then I also want to touch base on, because Chief Hosele is not here tonight, he was able to reach out to the chiefs of police in Nacusa, Anago, Rhinelander, Eagle River, and Monaca, all who have enacted some sort of ordinance that allows ATV, UTV use within their villages or cities. And one thing that we found, and to be honest, we were a little surprised at this, but one thing we found is that those chiefs of police in those areas have not, they've reported zero or very, very minimal problems since enacting their ordinances. Some of the concerns that we had talked about prior to Chief reaching out to them are laid out there for you. Concerns with not having to possess a valid driver's license. Operators not required to have insurance. A 12-year-old can technically drive an ATV on any route without an adult on the ATV. However, there does have to be an adult riding alongside or on another machine in that group. Possible increase in noise complaints. Some of the considerations from the Public Works Department that I just want to touch on. Shoulders of roads may see some additional damage due to ATV, UTV riding on the edge of the roads, which is typically kind of where the track that they take. of the roads, which is typically kind of where the track that they take. Future maintenance of signs. One thing in our conversations, we talked about the upfront cost of signage as we would have about, I'm just going to estimate, if we signed all the entrances within our community or within the city, we'd have approximately 16 to 18 signs to put up at the entrances. And then if we also put signage at the entrances to the downtown area, which we would propose not allowing ATV, UTV use, we would have about an additional six to eight more. So you're looking at 25 to 30 signs. Mr. Gene Goody, in a conversation with me and Chief Ozell, did say that that's something that the ATV, UTV Association would support as a one-time purchase, if we thought that this was the right direction moving forward, and then we would just be responsible for the maintenance of them. Things to consider from the Parks and Recreation Department, possible damage to Parks and River Ridge Trail System as a result of uneducated or irresponsible ATV, UTV drivers. You know, we could talk about putting signage up there as well, or we could, you know, just have signage as minimal as possible if this went forward, and kind of put it on the ATV, UTV users to know what the rules are of operating their unit. So what we ended up doing, the ordinance that you see that's attached, is actually based off of the Nacusa ordinance. And the reason we used the Nacusa ordinance is we felt like there was the least amount of kind of restrictions that was specific to the community of all the ordinances that we were looking at. So it's a good base point to start from. For example, if you were to look at Rhinelander's, Rhinelander might have, you know, 10 more bullet points that further restrict use, further, I guess, it restricts it further than the state statute does. The only things that, after talking with Chief Ozell, that we did add to it that would be further restrictive than the state statute is, right there under, number one, under recommendation, all city-maintained streets are designated as ATV, UTV routes, with the exception of the city's downtown area as follows. And that actually follows the same as kind of our, you know, no bicycles on sidewalks. It's the same area been defined by that. And then number two, hours of operation, use of ATVs and UTVs would only be allowed during daylight hours, which shall be defined as one half hour before sunrise and one half hour after sunset. Just to compare that to some other ones that we've seen, I think the City of Rhinelander had hours of operation till midnight, and then they could start up again at 5:00 in the morning. So this would be a little more restrictive than, than that, for example, but. So that's kind of an overview of the conversations that we've had, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Can I jump in before any questions? And I just want to make a comment, just sort of putting a finer point on what Aaron was just talking about. Those restrictions that were included in the ordinance are actually statutorily allowed under Section 23.33 pertaining to designating certain routes, and then the designating authority can specify effective periods of time. So those are statutory allowed provisions that a community can make.
Thank you, Tom.
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The hours of operation.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't want them to operate in the dark?
I think Chief Ozell just felt like it was, to start, it was probably less of a chance of something negative happening. There was one or two other communities, I know one for sure that had the exact same provision, and it was something that chief felt more comfortable with at this point.
Yes, I'm already hearing complaints about that item. So I guess I would like to visit that before I'm willing to vote in favor of it, because I don't see any issue with it. If, I guess I'd like to know the reasoning behind it. If it's just, I don't feel comfortable, I need more than that.
So I can tell you that the number one reason that we were talking about any, any hours of operation at all was probably noise complaint-based. So, you know, for example, like Rhinelander, midnight to 5:00, you know, that certainly made a lot of sense. And actually, we, we did think that we would, even if we followed something closer to that, we might go a little, you know, we might start a little later or a little before that, ended a little before that. So noise complaint was the big thing. Could we talk about doing something different, like you're suggesting? I think we certainly could.
I guess I, I don't know how noisy they are, but they can't be any noisier than the Harleys that run up and down the streets all hours of the day and night. So I'm, I still would like more than that.
Okay.
Do they have brake lights and turn signals and?
They do, yes.
Well, it depends.
Well, ATVs, I guess. UTVs do.
UTVs do. ATVs do not.
So that might be a factor, too. Want someone, they're putting their brakes on, and then there's no brake light. That could be a...
I don't know. The ATVs might have brake lights, but they don't have
Turn signal.
Turn signals on them.
Just don't have a turn.
They all have brake lights on them.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, if they don't have turn signals or brake lights, then that's, I mean, they would have to have that.
But they do.
Yeah, yeah. Brake lights, yes. Turn signals, possibly not.
But if it's noise and noise alone, then I don't buy it. Not favor that.
Okay.
I think noise is just one of the things that might be a problem. Also, bars are closed, or, you know, people aren't going out to bars as frequently prior to 5:00, or 6:00 or 7:00, whatever time the sun goes down. And that might be part of the thinking on having hours like that.
Yeah, I mean, certainly. Well, we didn't discuss that specifically, but
Right.
I think it's a good point.
So reducing the chance that you have people operating while impaired.
Scott, you have?
I have a question for the Police Department. Is, if you lose your license to drive a car, would you be legally able to drive a ATV or UTV around the city?
Yes.
So they could circumvent not being able to?
Correct. You don't need a driver's license to operate. In fact, I think, like Aaron said, you could be 12.
Aye.
Paul?
I would tend to agree with Eric that if it was just simply noise, that, living on South State Street near, near Eric's house, so I was very, he always having wild parties over there. But I hear plenty, plenty of noise, and I would, yeah, I would think perhaps a later time. And because you have differing times when their sun set, it would probably be better to have a set time like 10:00 PM versus going at a different time at different seasons for...
That's a good point.
I do have a question for probably Eric and Paul, everyone else. So, okay, so if noise is not contributing factor to this, are you, would you suggest just leaving it open throughout the night or throughout the 24 hours or not, or, just, just curious? Or would you still like to see some set time where it open and close?
Well, I get, well, I get plenty of noise at all hours of the day. I would think 10:00 PM would not be a bad time to, to have a time limit.
I'd be willing to go with 10.
Okay. Thank you. Any thoughts on morning hours?
6:00.
5:00, 6:00.
Yep. So.
6:00 AM.
10:00.
Hunter might want to go out and hunt early.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
I mean, that's.
That's early for me.
Maybe even 5:00, I don't know.
I would maybe do 5:00.
5:00.
For the hunters in the group that were.
Oh, let's just do 24 hours.
Yeah, why, why limit it at all? Why not just leave it open 24 hours a day?
Yeah.
I mean, it seems rather discriminatory. If, if we're not doing it on the basis of noise, then to limit it at all is not, we don't limit tractors, we don't limit semi-trucks to certain hours of operation.
Motorcycles.
Motorcycles. I'd say put no limits on it.
No, I'd agree with that. Are there, is there a city curfew that would prevent a 12-year-old from driving around after?
Yeah.
Okay. Can the city do anything in terms of setting a higher standard, requiring someone to be older than 12? Or we're bound by that?
Um, Tom, do you know the answer to that?
I don't think so. I think.
For some reason, I felt like that was one that we could not be more restrictive on.
I, can I get you an answer on that?
My concern is just a 12-year-old probably doesn't know proper procedure in terms of, you know, when you can pass, when you can't pass, how to, what the order of procession is at a stop sign, all the different sort of laws.
To be, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but, and maybe I'm wrong here, too, but to be able to drive an ATV at age 12, I thought you had to take a safety class.
You do.
You do. You have to take a safety class. I think the cutoff date, I mean, really, I think it's like 1980, it's like mid to late 80s. If you're born after that point, you have to take a safety class.
So that would help.
Yeah.
I don't know if they talk about driving on city streets, though, at those classes, but more and more, it's being used on city streets. I would think they would, they would, but.
A 12-year-old can't be out alone on an ATV, correct? Has to have an adult with him.
Not on the vehicle.
Right, just.
Well, there has to be an adult present in the group.
In the group.
Correct.
So they wouldn't be out on their own cruising around 12 years old at midnight.
That's correct.
So, anybody else? I have to ask Attorney Hart this question. So the ordinance has a time on there, and has it been posted? It hasn't.
Only in our packet.
Okay. So if we wanted to change that, I'm just saying, if, if the majority of the council wants to change that, we could go ahead and change that, and this could still be the first reading?
I think it would need to be posted. It would need to be re-posted.
Okay. So she's saying that it never has been posted yet?
It's just in our packet.
Oh, okay.
As the first reading.
Okay.
So this could still be our first reading tonight, even with changes? Or you could, you can let me know.
Well, I'll let you know.
Yeah. No, no, that's okay. I've always wondered that, to tell you the truth. It's not just this ordinance, but, so that's okay. I mean, I don't, to tell you the truth, I don't think there's a rush to get this passed this year, but it's, it'd be nice to, you know, move forward with it. So how do we do that tonight? Can we just make a motion on the, on the item in there, or do we just take a consensus of, of what people would like to see the time on there?
I would just take a consensus.
Okay. Yeah, because it, it's.
We're not taking.
We're not taking action tonight.
Right.
Okay. So anybody want to start here? What, what are you looking at?
I guess my main objection to 24 hours is, is if there's from 5:00 to 10:00, that gets away from the time when people are leaving from the bars, going to the bars. That's, that is my main thought of this. It's, maybe it might just be a bit too much to have, have it overnight on Saturday at 2:00 AM.
Okay. Anybody else? So we're, it sounds like we have, if we're talking a time limit, we're talking 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The ordinance says, it's written right now, is a half an hour before dawn and a half an hour after dusk. And then the other option was the 24 hours. Okay? So how do you want to proceed here? Do we want to just vote on each one of those and, and see where we have a vote, or, or can I just go around the room and ask you which one you prefer, and we can keep counting on our fingers and toes? Oh, we only need fingers. There's only 10 of you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So this, to me, sounds like we've already decided that we are going to allow ATV, UTVs in the city.
This is only the first reading of that.
Right, but we're, we're talking about the time that we're going to allow them. That, to me, just implies that we've already decided we're going to allow them.
The time was already in this first reading of this ordinance. They're just talking about changing that time that's in there. I mean, nothing is assumed that it's going to be approved until we actually vote on it at our next, at the second reading, which is probably our next meeting.
Right.
So I, I mean, I, anybody else help me here? I, I mean, I, I'm not assuming that at all.
I think, Mary, what, I think we're, I believe what's we're trying to do is, when it comes time to enact or vote on whether we want this or not, we want to make sure that the ordinance is reflective of what we would like that to look like.
Okay.
So then we're not changing it at that.
But if, but if somebody here or someone on the outside that's going to be listening since, to this publicly read ordinance twice, doesn't even want there to be ATVs in the city, how, how is, I guess then you just vote no at, at that point?
Right.
At the second reading.
Sandy, explain the process on, on how we move through the ordinance process.
Well, I think I understand that.
Do you want, I guess what we could do, too, if we really feel that this is important enough, we could have a public hearing, too, on this, if you wanted to.
We could.
Yeah, I mean, we're not required to, but we certainly could have a public hearing at our, before our next city council meeting. I mean, if that, if you would feel more comfortable with that.
I personally would feel more comfortable with that.
I would, too. I think that'd be nice.
Your, your, one man that Aaron spoke with, Mr. Gil, I, Mr. Gil did suggest that any communities considering passing a similar ordinance should go through an extensive public input and research process before making a decision.
Okay. So we will, Sandy, explain again. Sorry.
What do you want me to explain?
Just how you go through the process of making the public aware of the.
Well, we'd put a notice in the paper, and we'd also put it on our website, the public hearing notice. And then for next, in two weeks for our next meeting, it'll also be in the packet as the public hearing, the notice will be in. That could be our second reading, unless you wanted to start over and have it be our first reading. We could do it that way as well. We don't have to vote on it right away.
There might be no one who comes and has anything to say about it, but I think if we're going to have a public hearing, then we should certainly only have the first reading that day.
Okay.
And then vote on it the next time. So we would be taking into consideration if there were people who wanted to speak for or against it.
And we may get letters or emails or phone calls that we could bring to the public hearing as well as staff.
Right. Right.
But we would have a draft available for that, wouldn't we, for the public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
And presumably, this would be the draft, and we still have to make a decision what the hours of operation would be.
Have to decide if you want it changed, right.
Well, I, I like the idea of this. Go ahead, Dave. I'm sorry.
That would be my comment. If we're going to allow ATVs, UTVs, then I would say, if we're going to do that, they can drive anytime. No restrictions.
Okay.
I may choose to vote against it, but if, be there.
Okay. I guess that was my question. That was a better way of putting it, I guess. Yeah, I mean, I, by saying that doesn't mean that you're going to vote yes, that's for sure, in the future. So Eric, what's your?
I, I agree with Dave. I would like to see no restrictions on the time. I guess my question.
I guess my question is, if, if, if this does get voted in, we allow UTVs and ATVs, no restrictions, can we revisit it if things get out of hand and we get a lot of complaints down the road?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm, I'm for the no restrictions on time.
Paul?
24 hours.
Dmitri?
10 to 5.
Good.
I would also like restriction at time, 10 to 5 seems...
Good. Ellen?
24 hours.
Good.
24 hours.
Scott?
24.
Paul?
10 to 5.
Mary?
10 to 1. No, I'm just kidding. I don't want them at all, so it's hard.
You don't have to say anything, then.
Okay.
You're fine. So it's, the ordinance is going to say 24 hours. Okay? So we'll instruct, and I still think that we move this, we actually had the discussion tonight, so this truly is why you have a reading, a first reading. So I believe this is the first reading, and we'll have a public hearing at the next meeting, and then we'll vote on it after that public hearing at the regular council meeting. That will be the second reading. Okay?
Can I say one more thing, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Just to give you guys an idea of kind of what this will look like, and I don't want to get too far down a rabbit hole, but Justin and I were able to map out kind of where the signs would be located, as I mentioned in the past. So currently, the town of Wopaka does not allow it, and so it's not like people could be entering on ATV through maybe, you know, 60 to 70% of our entrances. Most of it would be kind of towards Highway Q-Q, off, you know, Grand Seasons Drive, in the Covered Bridge area, Larson Road. That's where people could be traveling actually from the townships into the city. Otherwise, there would be a lot of traffic within the city, starting and ending within the city. Just to give you an idea of what it looks like now. Now, that can change, but just FYI.
Anybody else for the good of this ordinance?
I just want to say that what we'll do then is put the public hearing notice in the paper on the 24th and the 31st, so we all have two publications for the November 5th meeting.
Good.
Okay.
And you'll put in there that we're also having a public hearing at the, about that ordinance, is that what you're saying?
That is the public hearing notice for the paper.
Okay, okay, okay. Awesome. All right, anything else on that? Let's go to ordinance 11-19. This is, has to do with the names of park, parks and recreation areas. Andrew?
Alan first.
Did I miss one?
The smoking in the parks.
Well, do the, let's do the parks one first. Let's do Jay first, since I set it up that way. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine, I just, well, thank you, Mayor. So that one has a lot to do with 10-19 that will be proposed earlier. Part of the stipulations there would be, the smoking would be not allowed in anything that's labeled under 18A.01, which is the ordinance that you, that we're talking about. That is on page, let me find it here quick.
202.
202. So what we're doing is, 18A.01 right now is just some old name changes, so we would be amending that to show all the parks that we have, including the Recreation Center with the green space and the parking lots around it, and then the River Ridge Trail System. So anything on this changed ordinance would fall under the no smoking in parks. That's, that's really why this one is in there as well.
Okay, so it's just defining our areas.
Correct.
And, okay.
All areas that would fall underneath the other proposed ordinance.
Okay. All right, so we need, I guess this one should have went first, then, anyway. So this is, again, just the first reading of this, so we will be voting on this at the next meeting. There is not a public hearing for this ordinance, unless you would like to see one. Okay, let's go back, then, and, and look at the previous ordinance about smoking ban.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. You can see my memo on the topic here on page, page 198 of the packet. So this is a conversation that has been ongoing for many years, even in the point when Mr. Jensen was the Park and Rec Director, it was brought up at that point as well. We've both heard concerns from community members and complaints about the cigarette butts in the parks, and the smoking around children near the playgrounds and other areas in our parks. I think we have an opportunity to be leaders in the area with this ordinance, and that's something we talked about at Park Board as well, you know, in our community and in the area, to help keep our community clean, and to help just be good role models for our kids, and to keep our kids healthy. And so, a lot of this was discussed for a long time. It was approved by Park and Rec Board to create an ordinance and to move forward with something on this, and, and you see that ordinance tonight in the first reading. Implementation, if passed, we would make sure we really do a thorough job in getting the information out, and making sure people are aware of the changes. We would use, to purchase signs, and we would work on how many signs and where to post them in, in highly visible areas. We still have some achieve grant funds, if you guys remember what that was. So we have those funds to purchase those signs, to make our community healthier. And there is a possible sign that I added in there, just so you can see in the packet down below the ordinance as well. We wouldn't have to do anything with the penalty, there's already a penalty in place for smoking in a prohibited place. That's already established in the City of Wopaka bond schedule, which we can, if you have questions about that, we can talk about that as well. And that's kind of the basis of this ordinance change.
All right, again, so this is just the first reading of the smoking ban on, in the city parks and park-related areas. We'll take this up at our next meeting also. Any comments? All right, let's move on to license report 1469. You can find that on page 203. We're just looking for a motion to approve those licenses.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Farah, that we approve of license report number 1469. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, we have agreement between the City of Wopaka and the School District of Wopaka for a second police school liaison officer, and...
I can take it.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron.
Yep. Yeah, so this is something that I've been in communication with Chief Hozell and Ron Sari at the, the district administrator for the school district. You guys probably know it was approved at the last school board meeting for, that the school would cover 75%, not only 75% of the wages, but also the training costs and the recruiting cost for this new officer. And if you want to jump in at any time, you can, too. So we are bringing this forward at this point because, you know, we're going to be going through the budget process, and Kathy will, maybe she can talk to it, too, but this, we felt like we needed to bring this forward, at least for possible action, because if we, if we don't today, it'll, it'll put that whole cycle back about a month because of the holidays. And I know the school district and Chief Hozell does want to get moving on the recruitment of this position. Kathy has found the money to cover our 25%. And the only thing that's different in the contract, so the contract that we typed up was the exact same as the one that we're using right now for Officer Zuby. The only thing that's different is it references that it's the second PSLO officer, and I believe the training, talks about the training costs. Otherwise, it's the exact same.
If I could add, just one of the things we want to get going on is, just the hiring process is about a two-month-long process for us. By the time we get done hiring somebody, and after they're hired, it's another 12-week FTO program. So it's a pretty lengthy time to get people on board.
So at, at best, I think you guys told me it was like April would be...
At best, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then that would give us some time to work with Officer Zuby, and he could train probably one of our... We've had some interest inside, and so hopefully, one of those people would move into the liaison position, and Officer Zuby could work with him and show him the, how to do it, I guess.
Great. Wes, do you have some comments? You can just sit right there, there's a microphone right there if you want.
Just...
There isn't there? Well, there used to be, all right.
You want me to say?
Yeah, please. I'm sorry.
You just want me front and center, anyway.
Maybe you can talk about, I mean, a lot of times, we, we get into a position where you're so busy at the high school, you don't necessarily have time to deal with the middle school.
Right, so the, kind of, last school year, the old administration was interested in it, and then it kind of fell apart. And then, obviously, the issues we've had so far this school year have really put it back at the front, front page of it. And really, even when things are good in, in my job at the school, I don't have time, I eat up so much time running from building to building, dealing with truancy at the middle school, and then truancy at the high school, or, it never fails, I'll walk into one building, then get a call from a different principal, they just had a fight. So it really limits the amount of time we can have those positive interactions, which is actually, when I agreed to be the police liaison officer, what I was looking forward to was not sitting in my office writing tickets, it was going into classrooms, teaching, going out into the lunchroom while lunch is going on, and sitting and talking to the kids, and having the positive interactions that, like I remember from Bob Lewinsky when he was the police liaison officer. But I get so, it, it's a different world at Wopak High School than it was back when Aaron and I went there. And it's, it's so time-consuming that there, there is easily more work than two officers can handle, but two is definitely going to cut down the amount of time. And obviously, with the safety aspect in mind of, I can only be in one place at one time. If something bad were to happen, it'd be better, you have better odds that a police officer is going to already be there. I know the middle school, because when the whole threat situation happened, I set up shop at the high school, because that's where my office is, and was coordinating all that investigation. But we had officers stationed everywhere, and the middle school principal actually told me that things, they had less other issues because there was already a cop there, and the kids knew that there was a cop right at the, or right at the middle school. So, I mean, the reason I came to this meeting was, if you guys have any specific questions, because Chief Hozell couldn't be here, I was a part of a lot of those conversations, so I might be able to answer some of them. Unless there's something else John you want me to address specifically?
No, I mean, the, kind of, it's a win-win for us. If the school is willing to do this, it's great for us, because we can use that second liaison as a, to fill in on patrol shifts in the summertime, and then it frees up our detective to do more drug work potentially, or other investigations. So, in our viewpoint, it's a great opportunity. We used to have two liaisons, by the way, too, and that was supported through a grant, and that grant ran out, and it's not available. So we, back in Lewinsky's day, we had one at the high school, and one at the middle school.
Anybody have any specific questions? Laurie, go ahead.
I don't have a question, but just a comment. I think our kids would feel much safer with two. You know, like you said, Wes, you're so busy, and then the middle school is full of all kinds of traumas, too, you know?
Right.
So the middle school would definitely feel safer.
To add to that, Laurie, not only students, but I would say teachers.
Teachers, you bet, everybody.
That was kind of a big thing on this last deal.
Yeah, when, when we were going through the, the whole threat situation, there was, I, I went to building by building to the staff meetings that they have once a week, and that was kind of the consensus, is that they, they were telling me that they wanted me there more, but again, I'm, I'm one person, I can only be in one spot at one time. So the, the plan would be for me to be at the high school, handling day-to-day at the high school, and overseeing kind of anything major that happened, and then the other one doing day-to-day at middle school and the elementary school. And then it'd be, it would kind of work like that, I guess.
A comment I would have is that you mentioned the education that you'd like to be doing in the classroom, and I think that's so important, and I, I'm sure you don't have time to do that periodically.
Right, I've, so...
And that's what we need.
We used to, when I, CounterACT used to be a, a full week thing. My first year as police liaison officer, I was able to get one day of CounterACT teaching in, and last spring, I, there was no CounterACT taught. And CounterACT is decision-based, making good life decisions. But it goes a lot further than that. I, most of you guys know my parents, I know that I come from two teachers, so I guess it's kind of genetic for me, but like so far this year, I went into Mrs. Duda's personal law class and played one of their favorite games, that was just, is it a legal if? And they got their free rein at a cop to ask all their legal questions and everything about that, and it, it's fun for them, it's fun for me. I, the eighth grade history class, when they're going through the Bill of Rights, once they get past the Fourth Amendment, I go in and we talk through the first through fourth, and, you know, it's, like, that's, that's why I, even, you know, I'm very senior at Wopak Police Department, so I definitely chose to be the police liaison officer, and it's those things that I wanted to do. And I'm hoping that the second one, we can get somebody like me that wants to do those positive interaction things, and I think all the kids will benefit from it.
Just one other perspective, we talked about the classroom a lot, I obviously was in high school last year, was fortunate enough to have an office next to Officer Zuby. And I will say that if the next person is half as good as Officer Zuby, as the school district and the police department would be, in very good shape. But even from a, from a special event or athletic standpoint, all the after-school stuff, they don't think of as well. Obviously, that's a huge concern for the people that are in charge of making sure people are safe there. Can't, you don't have the lockdown mechanisms, you don't have some of that stuff, so really, the most effective thing is to have someone on-site like, like an Officer Zuby. So just one more thing to point out.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Just, so the council's aware, from a prosecution standpoint, this trend has been happening for a while, but it is very evident with Officer Zuby's position as police school liaison officer. But I know that the court system, in addition to dealing with some efficiency problems there, has seen a drastic decrease in citations that are being prosecuted to juveniles, and I think that's due to Officer Zuby's intervention. I think it's a good thing. As a prosecutor, I don't think that if, well, I should, let me back up. If that same sort of philosophy continues with a second police school liaison officer, I, I don't anticipate seeing more ordinances being violated, or tickets being prosecuted, so I just wanted...
Now, Tom, does that, is that because of the juvenile system that you have, or is that...
It is.
Okay.
It is. Kathy, can you give us a dollar amount, just so we have an idea?
The dollar amount's about $25,000. And...
The city share.
The city share of this. And because of our new net construction for next year, which was more than a half percent, it was 1.27, we should have the levy, new levy capacity to fulfill this position. So there is that availability of funds to do that.
And the main... And the main reason I brought up the fund is because, or the cost of it, because if you actually approve of this agreement between the city and the school district, you are actually requiring then that that dollar amount be put in the budget for next year, too. So you're basically voting on a budget item here, too, for, for next year. Just want you to be aware of that.
And would it be my understanding that, that we would be essentially stating that we would increase taxes for that amount of the levy limit, then?
Not necessarily that our levy is going to go up.
But you're saying we would have the capacity if we needed?
We have the capacity in our operating levy to increase it, but the total levy, we're still working on it. But I don't see right now an increase in, in the levy. Great.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? This is to enter into an agreement here.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Martin, second by Peterson, that the council enters into agreement with the school district of Wapack for a second police school liaison officer, which would cost the city taxpayers about 25% of the total cost of that officer. Any discussion? Sandy, we call a roll.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatski.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Wes, thank you very much. Helgi, thanks. Appreciate that. Okay, next up, we have communications recommendations of the mayor. I just, again, wanted to remind you that you do have a committee of the whole meeting tonight, and so stick around for that. Otherwise, let's just adjourn this and move on.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn this city council meeting, subject to call. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November 5th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we're adjourned at 8:12 PM. You want to take a break? Yeah, let's take, let's take 10 minutes here, and we'll come back and.
Yep. How long is this?
If it gets approved, no, but, and I could go either way, I could carry on. I mean, I do. You are still going to put signs at the entrances to the town.
Yes.
Was in. Because how a person gets into the city of Wapack, we give it.
Correct. Just, yeah, that was just, I was just to say. Yeah, we don't care.
Well, we don't.
They probably won't come, they're likely.
I'm not going to say. Well, the town of Wapack, I said, they're not going to approve it. But they went one step further than us, really, is they said, we're not going to do anything until we find out it's an issue. So they're letting you do it every block, the townships. Stop it. I mean, we, we drive up and down Nichols Creek Road all the time. I mean, not very far, but, you know. Yeah. Well, and the other thing, we just need to. I don't want people. Calling pointing that somebody on UTV plowing snow down. You know, that are restricted and stuff. You know, I was going to say, I mean, I doubt that there'll ever be many. The outside borders, like the, going to like Schuler's and JR's and Truck Stop. Fleet Farm, which are all in the city. That's the big thing.
There you go.
It's true. Big thing about.
I haven't seen an UTV yet.
UTV. Well, plus.
Think it hits midnight, they got to. But it's more. I don't think it's going to be a big deal in our city.
Oh, wait, let's see what's.
Yeah, so they're, I mean, that's, that's why. Yeah, so they're actually by contract, they work.
And I love the work.
Whoever's making them, you know, manufacturers.
I think that's a really good idea. Currently does it, it looks like diamond drilling.
So say, we'll see the mini-forties down here with just water. Yeah, right, it would work out better. Truly, it's a win-win, because the schools. Lift them out. Sure.
You're not staying?
I do have a lady. You are our security officer. Security officer. Actually, to be honest with you, you know. How many craps have those cameras sawed? A ton of them. But they don't always see the bubbles.
Oh, you were there, okay.
That's, that's why they.
That stand is right by our second. The stand is by like 130 South, and we're in 135. Do they share that one? Because I don't always recognize everybody there.
Yeah. Somebody. Watched too many crime shows, you know. $2,600. I think there's some girls that. Yeah. Girls did something. But they were on it before. Yeah. Well, no, they walk up to it, their face is right on camera doing it, it's like.
Do we have an agenda, or like, plan on a thing?
Under the committee, the whole of the city website, but you can.
Are you still swimming?
Because everything else is.
Well, yeah, I just have my motion sheet.
No, but I mean, there's nothing else on the. Okay.
Stayed at the podium, so I'm sick of sitting the whole day. Zero.
Yeah, I was thinking that maybe we could cut down to one meeting a month, and then all. So that.
I got a video I didn't look at. I got the whole turned off.
Oh, he's going to talk.
I only remember one.
Oh, how cute is that? I wish I could take that young woman, my gosh, I'm going to have to wait for three days. Hey, no. Uh, she'll be 15.
That's so hard to believe, I just seriously, she was just.
It's actually.
Right. Or, yeah. She would have been just nine.
It's crazy how fast.
Isn't it? Yeah, blink, yeah. So each one of these people are going to talk. Although Ronnie doesn't have to, or Helgi doesn't have to, I guess, could call him, call him Captain.
Sometimes I say bucky.
Yeah, me too.
I don't know, maybe just.
Well, just turn it over to Kathy. Oh, I don't think he does. Well, I don't think he's a libra. 18 years, and I found out I had a gamble.
I've seen it lay there for years.
What, what was that?
You're right. I think I'll leave it out.
I think you should leave it out, people get out of hand, you go.
Yeah, you just bang it.
All right.
Okay.
Everybody here?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay. All right, this is the committee of the whole meeting, I call it to order. You have an agenda that was on your, on the website. We need, there are some handouts that went along with that, that you saw on your desk. And I'm sure Kathy and the department heads are going to go through those tonight with you. So we just need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve the agenda with those additions, additional handouts. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, this is your baby Kathy, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm going to have each of the departments that are making personnel requests in the 2020 budget to give the, give you their budget impacts for making those decisions. And then the second half of, of the meeting tonight is going to go over some of the employee benefits updates that were, we have that are impacting the budget. So the second police school liaison officer, we voted for that. There isn't anything else that I can add to it, other than we'll be putting that in the budget for the police department. The next personnel request is a full-time technology position. And Josh Warner from the IT community media director is going to go over his proposal.
We're finally hitting the point where I think it makes sense to combine different technology duties in the city and try to get a second full-time technology person in our organization. And it would kind of combine a couple of different facets. One, this person would do, would pretty much take over all the community media stuff that the various, anywhere from two to five part-time people I have at a time for community media dues, that would all be grouped mostly into this position. A significant amount of their time would be with Wapack online, and that's kind of driving part of the need to consider this. And then for the past month or two, probably about two months, I've been sharing a staff, a person with PEG at the library since their assistant director resigned, and the assistant director did a lot of the technology work over there. So this person's kind of bringing that expertise to the library, and I think that's been working so far. And there's still some time before this could possibly take effect, to feel that out, make sure that is a good long-term field. Well, and the other, I think, important role this person would fill, we'd like to develop them to be someone that could fill in, either on a temporary or permanent basis, for me or Ralph. Right now, we don't have any backup for either of these positions in the city. So that's kind of some of the thinking going into this. And then the memo in front of you, it kind of, it kind of laid out what the current makeup of the department is for staffing, for your review. On the second page, I've kind of got broken down percentage-wise what this person would do with their time, and that's based on what the different budgets could afford, and kind of what the need is. So going back to that point, part of what we do with this person is we, you know, over time, train them, get them up to speed that they could step into my role, or step into Ralph's role, should something happen. And with how important technology is in our organization, I think it would be an advantageous spot for the city to have backup to these positions. Another point in here, that the community media, all the part-time stuff would be funneled into this full-time position. We talked about the library. Wapack Online and its entire operation has never had a full-time staff person at all. It's all been operated off part-time staff, we make it work. It's not always the most effective. I think our customers notice when we have a lot of turnover, because maybe the level of service isn't as competent as when you have someone that is fully trained and up to speed. So I think with the growth we've been having, with the expansion we've been doing, I think it's. Um, so I think with the growth we've been having, with the expansion we've been doing, I think it's becoming more vital to really try to find someone and retain them longer to improve on that customer service. Um, you know, the average part-time person stays maybe a year, maybe two years if we're lucky. And I had some stats on here, in my eight years with the city, WAPAC online has had twelve different part-time employees and community media has ten, has had ten. And in both of those areas, we've had one or two people that have left and come back, so there's been a little more turnover than that. With this year's budgets, that's the numbers I've worked off of, cause we don't have an approved budget for next year. With funneling, with, if I take all my budgets online and, uh, the community media side and the funding PEG has put toward techno, toward an employee for technology, this year, there's up to fifty seven thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars available for staffing overall for technology in the city, aside from my position and aside from Ralph, who's an independent contract employee. And I just kind of laid out, uh, kind of what the staffing would look like should this happen. We'd still have a part-time, a significant part-time position because we can't have just one for going out and doing WAPAC online work. You need two people for a lot of the tasks they do for safety reasons, for ease of getting the work done. There's a lot of climbing, um, involved, so that's kind of laid out in here. And to put this into place next year, we're about ninety nine hundred dollars short. Um, so you might be asking, why are you bringing this if it's not quite there yet? And I don't want to come in mid-year and go, hey, we're at a good point, we've expanded some more, we could use someone full-time and get asked why didn't I present this during the budget process? I just want to get this out there so you've seen it and are kind of familiar, uh, with it. And kind of, I guess, the ask or, you know, I'd make for this is, I think in order to have that funding and a little bit of a safety net in there, um, our average customer pays forty-eight dollars a month, and the portion of the funding that we're missing comes from the WAPAC online side. Um, we're at three hundred and one customers right now, so I'd like to kind of maybe put the carrot out there. Once we hit about three hundred and twenty-two customers, that's the trigger to consider moving forward with this plan. Um, kind of at the end of the memo, I've put the past several years, what our expenses has been, what our revenue has been, our customer count, just to demonstrate that we have been, you know, it's been slow, but it's been steady growth. So I want to demonstrate that that's, uh, how things have been working out, that hopefully that doesn't reverse. So, the page following the memo, I put some statistics related to my department, what I handle, what my staff handles, just so you can see all the different things that, you know, technology encompasses in the state, whether it's the computers, the networks, how many different facilities we have, things and, um, specialized software, et cetera. So I, I put that in here to show the importance of maybe considering having someone that could back up Ralph and I that are slowly learning that stuff. And then I filed up a, uh, proposed position description for this. And a couple of my motivations for bringing this forward at this time to discuss it is, you know, there's no set date, not gonna happen tomorrow, but I'll be generic, Ralph's got a handful of years left with us. And I think our best bet with WAPAC online is to develop his replacement internally. I think we'd find going outside to get someone with those capabilities is gonna be very expensive. And this isn't a job you learn overnight. You can be trained how to program equipment, you can be trained how to set it up, but what happens when that creative situation comes up, you need to think outside the box? That's where the experience comes in. You know, when we have a customer that calls in that's having an internet issue, there's ten different things it could be. And if you don't have that experience to go, hey, I'm pretty sure it's this, let's start troubleshooting there. Um, it, it takes a lot longer. So I think one of my motivations is, you know, another handful of years, we need to start developing someone. So if we continue expansion, or when the time comes where he wants to start slowing down, we've got a replacement ready to go. Um, you're gonna be learning about some potential projects in the future that might allow us to continue some rapid growth, and that plays into this. And it becomes very challenging and tiring at times when you've got part-time people, a couple of them that walk out together, uh, nearing each other, just the training that goes into getting the department back to normal. So to have, you know, there's no guarantee a full-time person's gonna stay long-term, but the hope would be they'd stay a lot longer than a typical part-time person. So I think it would help solidify things going on to keep the department moving better. Um, I think there's more things we could be doing on the community media side if I had more consistent staffing than just part-timers coming in to tape a meeting here, a meeting here, where they're working around work or school schedules as well, where we could develop more things. Um, so I think that's just kind of a brief overview of what I'm looking for. This isn't something I'm asking for January first, it's something I'm asking when online hits that spot where we're bringing in some more revenue that would fully cover this, plus all extra to consider moving forward at that point. And I'm fully prepared, this may not happen next year, but I think based off kind of what I know about our future with online, I think there's a, you know, unless something unexpected happens, I think there's a pretty good chance it would make sense to consider this at some point next year, so. Any questions, comments?
The only question I have, Josh, is that what you're saying then is this would have no net effect.
On the general fund, yeah. So, um, the stuff coming from the general fund or the library fund, those are existing dollars. So I'm taking my community media part-time staffing money and putting that into this. PEG's committed, uh, number from the library side, which I'm sure will get approved when she goes through her budget process for that side. So my goal on this ask was not to create new duties, was not to ask for more general dollar funds. There might be a, I think we're talking a couple hundred, just to level it off. And I think through the, all the phone line savings we've done this year, that's, you know, that's a couple hundred buck difference on the general fund side. But I'm not asking for new duties, not asking for some large sum of money, it's gonna come from WAPAC online to make this happen.
So, uh, you were talking about the library, that brings up another question, of course, is, so if we don't hire a full-time position for this, who's taking over helping the IT of the library?
Right now, we are sharing an employees that puts me at a disadvantage with WAPAC online. Um, so that employee's doing fewer hours a week with that. We did, uh, we typically hire a college kid in the summer, usually an intern or just someone interested in IT or networking the past couple summers, and that's worked well, and we've kept that employee on longer to fill that void, although, um, he's finding between school and doing this, that might not be working out. But the short-term plan was to keep him on until or if this happens.
Okay, so Kathy, is it fair to say that if council wanted to put somebody on right away, worst-case scenario, it would cost us ten thousand dollars in extra money?
I think the impact would be, it would definitely just be on, uh, WAPAC online, the way he's got it set up. There wouldn't still be any impact within the general fund, um, but, because he'll be using part-time dollars.
Yep.
Uh, in the general fund. So what it would be, it would, it would be an increase in the WAPAC online budget. Um, and that just would be eating into some of their retained earnings, their reserves. So if that, if you wanted to fund it for the whole year. Right now, Josh is predicting that, um.
Probably early summer.
What, about mid-year is when we would bring them on, and that would, and that would, um, be only a half-year funding of, of WAPAC online for that position.
For that year.
Right.
I want to make sure online can fully sustain this, I don't want to be asking for more tax dollars cause I know how, you know, how little new money there is. I want to make sure online's sustaining that, that's kind of.
So you want to make sure WAPAC online has a net profit before you move forward with this?
Well, we're profitable right now, we need to make sure we're profitable doing this, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Well, you just made our life easier, but.
Unless you want to give me more money, I'll take it, but.
Okay, thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Any questions, other questions?
Good job, Jeff. Um, the next, um, request is coming from the public works department, and Justin has his list of, um.
Thanks, Kathy, so my memo is here, I believe that's all been distributed. I have three basic requests. The first deals with our custodial staff, uh, we have four custodians. Uh, right now, the starting pay is at ten fifty. Uh, similar to what Josh has mentioned, we see quite a bit of turnover at this position, and we believe it's due to the pay. Uh, Russ Montgomery, myself, have looked at a number of places, both public and private, as to the pay. Uh, I attached, um, some of the local municipalities. You can see where we land, uh, near the bottom for basically all of them on there. Uh, what we're proposing for our custodial staff is a flat fifty cent increase, uh, to all of them. Uh, so right now, the lowest is at ten eighty-two, the highest at eleven thirty-three. We'd add just a fifty cents increase to their pay starting January one. Uh, we are not requesting the cost of living, whether that be three percent or something different, it'd just be that flat rate. Uh, moving forward, our starting pay would then be eleven dollars, right now it's, it's ten fifty. Um, we're looking at our budgets, every year we're coming in on our part-time wages line item, we're coming in underneath. Uh, over the past couple of years, we've done some reshuffling with hours, um, and we have room to make this move. So when I calculated the numbers, this increase to all the staff, if they were to work, uh, their number of hours that they typically work, uh, it's gonna increase that line, or not that line item, but increase it by twenty-six hundred dollars. Uh, and like I said, when we're looking at our budgets at the end of the year, we're consistently underneath that line item by five thousand plus or minus. So we have room to absorb that, so I would not be making, uh, an increase to that budget line item to accommodate, um, I guess, this, this personnel request. The second request, uh, is actually two-in-one. Our street crew, we have, uh, a few laborer positions. Now, we created this laborer job description, uh, back in twenty fifteen, and then we did that new pay scale uh, with Park and Rec in twenty seventeen. Now, we did those things on purpose, uh, we wanted to create more of a, I guess, a diversity between the younger members and the, this older members, uh, to separate what they've shown, uh, with their experience. So typically, our crew, our street crew had never had laborers, uh, they said operators or skilled operators. There was two different pay levels, so we created that laborer position, uh, and we filled that so far with, with three individuals currently. Uh, the first two was Zach Thorn and Brogan Konzoria. Uh, so when we did that and brought that pay scale forward, uh, it was described that for the first five years of that pay scale, uh, we, the city would, would see about thirteen thousand dollars in, in savings over those five years. So Brogan and Zach have been on board for about eighteen months now. Um, so for the first year, the first year that they've been employed at the city, we saved five thousand in wages for both of those individuals, I guess, each, each. Um, what we want to do is give them a promotion, we want to promote them to operator. Uh, so our, our crew would have just one laborer on it, which is our, our recent hire, which is Teagan. Uh, Zach and Brogan would go to operators, and now our, our crew would be more of our typical crew, which we have our skilled operators, first ones in the back, those in the plows, are operators, which are, um, more or less, you know, the, the skid steers and other equipment, and the labors are shovels and rakes. When I ran the numbers on this, uh, they would increase, uh, for per operator, our wages would increase thirty-three hundred dollars a year. Um, when we, basically what that means, uh, since we're promoting them from laborer to operator, instead of seeing a, a three thousand dollar savings, we're now gonna see about a twenty-eight hundred dollar savings. Um, and again, our wage line item, uh, we have that capacity built in still. When we did the, the pay scale, it's not like we slashed our wages, we, we made a conservative reduction. So we have that capacity to promote these individuals, cause that was the plan all along, they would be getting these steady increases and raises. Um, so we have that, so we would not be looking to adjust that and, um, I guess ruin the budget that way. Uh, the last request deals in the.
Hold on just a second here.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry, uh, so we're talking street crew, this is all general fund?
Yes, it is, correct.
Okay, and let me ask you this, too. I'm not, so you're saying that we would've saved thirteen thousand dollars if these two individuals would've stayed at the current level for five years?
That's correct.
And, and that was the plan, but now you're changing the plan?
Well, what we're, that was the plan, uh, not to keep individuals at labors, uh, for their entire careers, only if they wouldn't perform, outperform their, their current positions. So we have on the scale, we have a laborer without a CDL and a laborer with a CDL. Uh, we intend everybody to have a CDL, so we push them to get that within that six months. So, uh, they get that increase and they keep moving up the scale. If they stay at that position for five years, that's what that thirteen thousand dollars is based on. If they perform, uh, and they feel like they've done such, we'd like to give them promotions. The savings now, if they stay at the operator line, instead of being thirteen thousand, it's gonna be more like, um, nine to ten thousand. And that's, that's versus the old pay scale of somebody comes on board, they get through their six-month probation, uh, once they're done, then they're at full rate, along with everyone else on the crew. Good. So we're, we're still realizing savings here, Mayor, uh, just not as much if we were to keep them at labor. We just think that these two individuals, uh, have outperformed that position. Finally, the third one, the water department, uh, so right now, we have three certified operators that run pretty much the water utility. Um, we have in the budget, and, and maybe Kathy can explain this a little bit better, we have, uh, wages allocated for assistance from the street department, uh, basically to assist with a lot of these regular maintenance, labor-intensive items, turning valves, hydrants, uh, digging in the ground, fixing leaks, that sort of thing. Uh, what we've seen or what we realized is, hey, street crew has, uh, their own maintenance items and issues, so to give that time has been difficult. Um, and we feel that adding an actual wa, a certified water operator, uh, we can basically maintain our system much better. We're, we're talking more than just turning valves, I mean, we're talking about, uh, increasing our sampling with new regulations that are coming up, uh, letting copper rule, uh, chlorine residual, our, our water main replacements, we're increasing those, uh, we've talked before how we have four-inch water main. Now that we're having road projects that go over top of these four-inch water mains, we need to replace them. Person has to inspect that, and that's falling on our water department. Um, over the last few years, our utility has seen a twenty percent, uh, water loss, uh, which is fairly significant. That means that twenty percent of the water that we're pumping, we are not selling or have no account for. Um, and we feel it's just our older infrastructure, and basically what we want to do is, um, the big push is to replace all of our meters with this new cellular, cellular-based, uh, meter system. So we bring on this individual, between the new individual and one of our existing operators, would focus on these meter swap-outs, uh, and then just continue assisting with these regular maintenance items and keeping our water, uh, system safe, um, just as normal. So this, it would be supported a hundred percent by the water utility, which is not supported by tax, but by user funds. Um, and again, there would be basically a straight swap-out with the funding that, um, is typically allocated from support from other departments, um, would just go straight to one of its own members, uh, within the water utility.
So Kathy, would this require any kind of water rate increase to, to fund this individual?
We're anticipating only, we're going for a simplified rate increase, again, for the water utility, which is gonna be three percent. It's one of those where we're not ready yet to do a full rate case, and we think that there's, just keeping up with these small little increases, that when we do finally get the whole meter project all done, that that, when we do a full rate case, that, that impact is not, like some communities get, you know, fifteen to fifty-five percent increases because they haven't had increases over the years. So we're looking at this, just fitting in with our regular small little increase, um, through the Public Service Commission. Um, I don't see this as being, uh, a big impact at all on the operating of the, of the water utility.
Has the water usage our charges to our customers? Has the water usage, our charges to our customers, has that leveled off? Because I know that it'd been declining for a number of years now because of people being more economical and businesses closing that were high-water users and stuff. Are we at a point where we have a pretty good idea where our revenue is? And and by finding these leaks, we could be increasing our revenue?
Yes, it's absolutely what we're looking to do. The twenty percent is water that we're not selling. So if we can reduce that number down to ten or even five percent, we want to get underneath ten percent. That's more revenue back to the utility. So certainly, we that's our focus moving forward here the next five years.
Another thing is, is with that meter project, the sooner that we get in, the sooner that we can roll out the ability for the customers to go online and look at their bills so that they can understand, oh, I have, I did have a leak, I have a leak because here I can see it online that there's a problem with my water. So I we, but we need to get all of our our meters out there and changed over. So this is the last push to get the balance of the meters converted.
Good.
The next position is the part-time senior center front desk position with Andrew Whitman.
Thank you, Kathy. Try to go through this memo briefly here. So this is a conversation that's been ongoing for quite a while. I'll talk about the needs a little bit in in a little bit. But really, the forefront of this is the members' needs. It's something that has come up before as far as we did add the position title to the pay scale and added the pay scale. And the job description was already approved and back in January by the common council. So we have kind of worked through the process and and gotten things in place as we move towards this. The needs really come from a a couple of things. You're looking at the numbers there as far as how many members we have, how many check-ins we have, how many people are coming through there on a daily basis. The senior center has continued to add multiple programs through each year. You can see some of the numbers on there over the past two years. They've added eleven new programs. I just wrote a couple down there for you. Mind Body Connection, Soulutions, Mahjong, Cardio Drumming, which if you go to the Fourth of July Parade, you see them each year demonstrating that. That's our most popular class by far. They, I can hear them in my office hooting and hollering and making lots of noise. They've done several grants and partnerships over the last couple of years, including the PALS that I talked about earlier, Sip and Swipe, Living Well With Chronic Conditions. And I really believe all these programs really serve the community well and really add a lot to, you know, the what the seniors can can do in our community. They also have done up to seven fundraisers the past two years, and a lot of that money goes back into Serenity Park and many other projects within the senior center. So as you can see, a lot has been added the last couple of years. And that really draws away from kind of that director position. She teaches classes. So she is a working director that is up there in the exercise room teaching classes. She's heading all these fundraisers. And a lot of times, unfortunately, that leaves the desk unmanned. And so there's a lot of people coming through there, as you can see. There's a lot of people who cannot get their answers que- or questions answered. And a lot of times, they'll come upstairs and we try to help the best we can. But we're not always sure what they're what they're, you know, looking for as well and possibly missed memberships as people come in and maybe try to wait around. And we try to do our best. You know, we go down there and help sometimes when it's really busy. But it just gets difficult with the miscommunication. It's also my goal to get our senior center coordinator out in the community more to advocate for the senior center and to show what a great resource it is to our community. And right now, it's a struggle to do that. And that's something we've talked about over the past two years of how we can accomplish that. And it just becomes difficult because she's also on a couple of different boards in the community as well. So what we're trying to do is add this front desk assistant to take care of all those questions, all the people coming through during the busy times. And and that's kind of what we're looking for. A little bit there on the future of the position, we do have some multiple part-time positions like, you know, Josh does in IT. As those positions leave, we may try to incorporate this into more of a singular position so there's not so much part-time here, there, and having people who are invested in the senior center. Funding, as we talk about funding, I'm not asking for any increase to the to my operational budget. We've looked at possibly doing twelve to fifteen hours during the busiest peak times of the senior center, which is generally the mornings. And so that, you can see, would equate to between six thousand and eight thousand dollars. And we're looking at the senior center budget first, looking at the part-time wages line item that's already there. We do have some room there. Some of our part-time staff now take some long extended vacations over the winter time. And so that frees up some of that. We also have significant savings with some of the things like Josh was talking about, the IT stuff, cost savings and other forms. Our advertising has gone way down with some of the changes that Cassandra has made. And so we have some room in our budget to accommodate that. So it's really just a shifting of funds and not asking for an increase in funds to make this position happen.
Andrew, what is, remind me again, what is the fee that seniors pay to belong to the senior center?
So it's twenty?
Sorry.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars? So we have increased it?
I think the last time was fifteen to twenty, depending on there's in-city and non-resident and stuff like that. When was the last time that it was increased?
Probably two thousand seventeen, I would say.
And you still feel like that fifteen to twenty-dollar figure is a is a fair number?
We've actually had some internal conversations, Aaron and myself and Sarah and myself, about booking, revisiting that in the near future.
Is that is that twenty dollars a month?
No, a year.
For a year?
So two bucks a month.
Yep.
But they do pay for various classes they take. Some some fees, some don't.
Some do have fees. So, you know, that that is a conversation that's ongoing right now.
So if you're a city resident, you pay fifteen dollars? And if you're a, no?
Twenty.
Twenty.
To twenty, twenty-five?
Resident pays twenty dollars?
I should know.
I think it's fifteen and twenty. I thought it was city pays fifteen, non-city pays twenty. At least at least when I left.
Ten for city, I think, and you'd jump to fifteen.
Yeah. So we'll continue that conversation, especially in light of, you know, all the different things that we have added. There's a it's a pretty big list of things that have been added in the last couple of years. And to me, that just shows how great that staff is already and the needs. You know, all those programs are full and and running well. So there's definitely a a need and a growth in that senior center down there.
So twenty dollars is pretty cheap, though.
Correct.
If it keeps growing, yeah.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Sorry. Thank you, Andrew.
Administrative Services Reorganization, Aaron.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, so this is something that Kathy and I just started working on as far as budgetary stuff today. We got our budget worksheet this morning and going through a number of things. So I'm going to have more detail as this goes forward. I want to give you a thirty-thousand-foot view on what we're looking at. So in the Planning and Zoning Department, we have a number of moving parts. We have a couple of part-time building contractor that's part-time, Andrew Dane, who's part-time right now. We have Elizabeth, who's our code enforcement officer, who's going through certifications to to get up on her building inspection with the idea that she'll eventually have enough over the next three to four years to be a full-time building inspector. So I'm putting together some things right now to not only look at two thousand twenty, but through two thousand twenty-three. And some of those things, try to get people in the in the place that that maybe was intended to be in the first place. For example, Rhonda, right now, Rhonda Rollins, her job description talks about how a focus of that job title is GIS, which stretches across the entire, not only the planning and zoning, but helps public works, helps parks, helps police department. And right now, with where the staffing is, she's just not able to do any of that over the course of a week. So one thing we're looking at is, just to get, as a snapshot, possibly in two thousand twenty, Andrew Dane is going to be moving from, you know, twenty hours a week doing economic development stuff to more of a special project. He's going to have a lot of his time tied up in that comp plan. So I'd say almost a hundred percent of his time will be doing that. And then we can use him as a consultant, you know, on the side. An option would be to get Rhonda back into the GIS is to hire a planner. Obviously, we had Brennan as the Economic Development Director. So there are levels of planners. There are associate planners, planner one, planner two, planner three, and then directors. Right now, I'm going through a benchmarking process with communities our size to better understand exactly what economic development, planning, and zoning departments look like and how many staff members they have. So I'm, right now, I've probably got about six responses out of the ten to twelve communities I've sent it to. But one option could be Andrew Dane is now special project for two thousand twenty. A planner could be brought on on in, you know, halfway through the year and then shift Rhonda to more of the GIS duties that she was supposed to. In the meantime, we're also getting Elizabeth trained by Jane, who's our current building inspector. Elizabeth, kind of, I want to share this celebration, too. She just passed a two tests, residential building inspection tests. She'll take, she's planning to take two residential tests next summer. In two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two, she'd be taking two commercial tests. And then plumbing would be the last one, a commercial plumbing in two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three. So we anticipate having Jane as a building inspector on in some capacity until Elizabeth got through all of her inspections. So right now, we're just trying to map out exactly how those transitions overlap in the next four years. And I can tell you that what we have is, we're not asking for any more money in that department either. There'd be no negative impact on the budget as we go through that process. So that's something that I will have, I'll have all that detail as far as numbers for you at our next, next time we talk about this. But that's kind of what that that Planning and Zoning Department, the discussions are there. The other thing I want to mention is, and Sandy mentioned it before, Barb Robert as a deputy clerk. Sandy, we just talked about, have you ever missed an election in how many years? Never?
I never.
And never, and even more impressive, maybe one council meeting in how many years? So Sandy won't be around forever either. I'm not saying she's leaving tomorrow. But this was a great opportunity to start that succession planning. Barb has gotten her certification for deputy clerk, and we'd like to to start that. So we have somebody for Sandy when she's done or when, if Sandy's sick during an election. You know, what do we do right now? Obviously, Henry?
Presidential next year. We have four elections. And with the main presidential election, I want to train her. I want to get her going, so.
Right. Yeah. So so Barb and Sandy have been able to have good conversations with me about it. Sandy has drafted a job description that would reflect that. And we'd like to move in that direction, and we'll show those budget numbers at a later time, too, as the budget comes forward. But that's that's what we're looking at as far as kind of some reorg in the clerk's office as well as the Planning and Zoning Department. Any questions?
Okay, the next item is elected officials' rates of pay. I had heard some comments from the Alderman about, when was the last time that Alderman and the mayor had received a pay increase? And after some research, it was two thousand and two. So for seventeen years, there has not been a pay increase. So I went and started looking at the surrounding communities. The the town of Farmington supervisors are paid four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars a year, plus fifty dollars per meeting mileage. And and that isn't, doesn't include the monthly board meeting, town board meeting, but it does include any of the meetings that they go to. So if they go to the Park and Rec Board, the Fire District, the Recycling District, the County or whatever, they get an additional fifty dollars per meeting. The town of Dayton is five thousand dollars a year. I don't know if they get a per meeting. Judy didn't provide that information. Chairpersons in the towns, the town of Farmington makes twelve thousand five hundred dollars, plus fifty dollars per meeting, and the town of Dayton is twelve thousand. Our current council makes three thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. And that's if you are one committee that you chair because you get twenty-five dollars a month for being a chair of a committee. And the mayor makes nine thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars a year. So if I brought you the council up to the curb, to the average between the town of Farmington and the town of Dayton, council members would make four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the mayor would make twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And those are just random numbers that I put out there. If that was the case, the impact to the to the council and mayor's budget would would be about nine thousand dollars for next year because only half of the council would receive the raise until they're elected. So you don't, you can't get that raise until you are reelected. So half would be get it and half wouldn't. Another option we could look at would be is to stagger in that that those raises over a three-year period. But I'm was looking at the inequities that the towns have compared to the the council. So and the fact that you haven't had a raise in seventeen years and they're giving the employees raises. So I thought that we could, we could try and fit this within the budget without increasing the levy. So.
Just out of curiosity, I know the townships, they vote themselves a raise for the next year. Is there a difference between townships and us as far as how, what we have the ability to do?
You, well, the same thing is with the townships. They wouldn't get that raise until they were reelected.
Oh, they're just reelected every year, is that it?
No, they're they're two-year terms.
Oh.
So if they gave themselves a raise and if they had staggered, let's say, one supervisor gets elected one year and the other one gets elected another year, which I kind of doubt. I think in the town of Farmington, they're all elected all at the same time. It's chair and the two supervisors are are elected at the same time. Then then you would get that increase on
I was specifically thinking of the township of Lind. I know that they they vote themselves raises the very next year for the current people, but.
Are you suggesting this is just a budgeting process or don't we have to vote ourselves a raise?
You would have to vote it in that I I'm I'm looking at for for directions from from you as to whether or not you want me to fit this, fit this within the budget. And like I said, I'm
I think it's a great idea.
Do we do enough for a raise?
Yes, we do.
And I and I think, like I said, I I thought putting you on the same same platform as the two other surrounding larger communities was was more appropriate.
Do you have any thoughts about the per-meeting?
Do you have any thoughts about the per-meeting amounts? I mean, speaking for myself, I sit on some committees that hardly ever meet, and so I'm not gonna really benefit by a per-meeting sort of a rate. But I know other, other persons spend quite a bit of time in meetings, and that extra effort, I think, should probably get an extra compensation.
We could do that. The only thing is, is when you do that, I've, in researching it with the different, with the town of Farmington, you could anywhere increase somebody's, like the mayor, if I gave him $50 for each meeting outside the council meeting, you could easily have maybe.
I could double my income.
You know, I, I don't know. I, I guess it's hard to, to me, that's a little hard to budget. I think if you were going to do it, it much, it's much more transparent to the public that this is what you're getting, that you can't artificially influence. Because you could say, well, I'm going to the county meeting, I'm going to this meeting, I'm going, and, and, and ask for a per-DM on each of those. I think by having it within that salary is much more appropriate.
I have a comment. I certainly agree with you, Kathy. I think that's a valid point. However, we, we do have to think about who, about how, how do we entice or, or make it be, the, the fact of someone being a councilperson attractive to younger people, because we do need people to replace us eventually.
I'm young.
I mean, unless, you know, they're, so I'm just saying that, that it's something, another, another side of it, another way to look at it, is that the more attractive it can be, and it's, no one gets on council to be, make money, obviously. So, but just to make it attractive enough that maybe, potentially, it might be just that nudge that gets someone to consider running for city government.
My personal opinion is if somebody is going to run for city government, they have a civic, they feel it, to them, it's their civic duty. I think that you need to, if, if you wanted to do more to get people involved in, in city government, it would be to start teaching in the school district or in, in, in other places, that this is, this is what it is to be an, an all-of-person. This is what it is to be a mayor.
Right.
And I think, I think that that's the place that's, piece that's missing as to why people don't want to. They only hear that, I'm gonna be an alderman, and I'm gonna hear somebody calling at, you know, 10 o'clock at night because their garbage didn't get picked up or something like, and the road didn't get bowled. And, and that turns off a lot of people.
Right.
But I think the, the teaching, the civic duty is, is what needs to get done.
I agree that that's another factor. I, right.
So, but like I said, I think that was one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we, we fit that in budget. And I don't see right now any, any issue with that for, for doing that. So part of the budget presentation proposal on the 5th of November Committee of the Hall will be going over, here's your full budget, and then what, all included and what the costs are, because I'll have all the numbers. As far as the city employee rates of pay, we do have a current contact with the police union for a 3% raise. I believe there's a 2% and then a 1% bump. It's a split. So I'm looking at a 3% city employee rate of pay across the board. And I can, the reason we can afford that is because our transportation aids number has paid off. Us doing the road projects that we're doing, our transportation aids have increased by $58,000. So that will cover a 3% raise within the general fund. And if everybody's agreeable to, to do the, the 3%, I will work on, on putting that. And on the employee benefits update, the Wisconsin retirement rates are going up. They're only going up a quarter of a percent, both for the employee and for the city's portion. So we are seeing an uptick in, in, a slight uptick in the retirement costs. The health insurance is a 0% increase. Dental, we are, went out to market, and the wellness committee is looking at changing from Delta because the employees would have seen an 8% increase in their premiums. And so we are looking at Anthem?
Yes.
Anthem, Anthem, changing it to Anthem. Vision, there's no change in from Superior, and the short-term and long-term disability insurance is also seeing flat. One of the things that, on the sick leave accumulation, we heard over the past several years, when an employee retires, how it, how it tampers the department for replacing somebody, because we have these sick leave banks that we have to pay out. We have several employees that were over, at, at one time, we had unlimited sick, and we didn't cap it at 1,200. So I have some employees still out on the books that have some hours out there. And one of the things that I'm going to be requesting for the end of the year is to, to pay these employees out. And one of them is Captain Helgeson. We have Roger Hanson and Russ Montgomery, which totals about $40,000 of sick leave. We would put that money in the health reimbursement account so that it was tax-free and that they could use it for health insurance if they did retire or leave the city's employment. And I, my recommendations for that would be, since we did have $370,000 left over from last year's budget, we were in the good, is to use one-time money to do this one-time expense payoff, and, and just use fund balance to pay this down. That won't hamper either the police department or the street department in, in replacing them. The other person we have is Mark Nolenberg in the water department. His sick leave bank, because of the way we account for them, is already in their fund, and they could, we could do that and pay him with no impact at all, because it's already been accrued. So I'll be looking at, on November 5th, we'll be looking at paying that, that down. So that'll help in future budgets, if any of these employees retire. The wellness program.
Do you need council approval for that?
I'll need, I'll need council approval. So I'm bringing this back. I'll have a separate item for this, but I just wanted to bring it out that, you know, we're going to be looking at, at, at helping with budgets going forward.
Well, and you said one thing I want to make sure that I understand, that council does, too, that by paying, paying off the excess over the 1,200, when these individuals retire, we're still gonna have an impact in that year that they retire.
For whatever they have currently on their books.
Yeah, if they have it all. They have 1,200.
They have 1,200.
That's gonna affect us.
Right.
Okay.
But it, but these are over and above that.
I get it.
So this is a, you know, this is helping reduce, also reduce the liability that we have on the books.
Yeah, I mean, it's completely off the books once it goes into their HRA, which makes sense. And they really don't need a need for that until they do retire. So either it sits in our account or it sits in their account until it's needed. It's.
The other thing is, is they won't be getting any increases on these dollars, these hours either. So we're gonna be buying them out at this year's rates, so that they, they can, and they can invest them in the, the HRA. I'm trying to think of, the, the HRA program that we have, they can invest in a mutual fund with this, depending on if they want to, what their risk level is. And that's averaging 6 and 7% right now. So if they wanted to, they could probably make more money if they would, would invest it in it. So, so I, I don't see any issue from the employee's side of it. But the other, the last item I have is on the wellness program. We did have all of our full-time employees, whether they were on the insurance or not, take the PHA testing last year, and we did it again this year. I'm going to be proposing for next year is that, because we have 14 of our employees, which is really a lot, considering we have 55 full-time employees, 14 are tobacco users, or live with somebody who's a tobacco user. So I'm looking at having a tobacco user insurance surcharge, so that, that we, if you do test positive for tobacco or nicotine, that you would, would pay a surcharge. And I'm having the Horton Group draft the language that we need. We invest a lot of money in our wellness program, and I think it should be that, you know, we're, we're trying to promote a healthier lifestyle, and, and to be looking at the possibility of future impacts on our health insurance premiums going forward. That's why, that's it for personnel.
That was a practice when I was still active 20 years ago. My company had a surcharge for tobacco users. It was not uncommon in the private sector, and I think it's appropriate.
It's just one more incentive to hopefully help them.
Get help.
To get help, yeah. So, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, Kathy?
Nope. So November 5th will be our next Committee of the Hall, and we'll have a budget for everybody to look at. I'll have, hopefully, the state will have our statement of assessment done, and I will have some anticipated tax, some tax rates.
Just to, to add to that, so since we've seen the request tonight, I've asked Aaron and Kathy through emails, they probably haven't seen it yet, but that we sit down and talk about the request. And so if you have any questions or comments about the request tonight, get them to either me or Aaron or Kathy, so that we, we'll probably have this discussion next Tuesday afternoon. So in the meantime, if you, if you want to talk about it, let us know.
Yeah, and, and just email me any questions that you have, if you have anything, or the department that you're, you know, questioning, but.
Okay, anything else for the good of the meeting? Paul?
Oh, sorry.
Motion by Hagan, second by Kealan. We adjourn this Committee of the Hall meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We're adjourned at 8:24 PM.
9:24.